You want to start recording?
Recording in progress.
Okay, great. So we will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, August 6. We are on. Win Cam, thank you Win Cam for being here. Thank you Cheryl Dennis, our recording secretary for being here. If you do not want to be recorded, turn off your camera or make sure you're on mute and we keep non-board members muted to prevent Zoom bombing. So if you have something to contribute to the meeting and we haven't already unmuted, you raise your hand so that we know to unmute you. And we will open with a roll call vote. So Nick Rosatos, nice to see you.
Present.
John Cortezus.
Here.
Deab Jarius.
Present.
And Brian Vrenalia, vice chair.
President.
And I'm Carrie Layton and I'm present as. Do, what do we have for updates? Taylor, you've got a good update. Or do you want me to share it?
You can go ahead.
Okay, so the candidate that we spoke about last time for assistant town planner has accepted the position. So Ian will be joining us as assistant town planner pending the approval from the select board at their next meeting, which I think is August 19th. Is that right? So that's great. He was very prepared for the interview. He had read our master plan. He had read, he knew the details of the water field development. He had gotten to know some background information before he even started. So I think he'll be able to hit the ground running and we're really excited to welcome him.
That's great. What's his full, what's the full name?
Ian Sexton, is that right?
Yep, that's correct.
Great, Ian Sexton. Yeah, so that's exciting to get that going. Other updates from board members or Taylor? All right.
I just had a question. I know that we're obviously we're heavily involved in the North Main design and but I'm wondering if Michael has, or if anyone has had a chance to do a draft of the 3A design guidelines.
We want those to kind of emerge from the North Main design guidelines. So we're getting to them. It's a good question. I think I've heard back at least, and I may have missed email, so I apologize if I did not. But I did not catch your response, but I think Deab and Brian both let me know that they could do a meeting next Tuesday, the 13th, to specifically talk about design guidelines.
Yeah, yeah, if we have to do that, I can, I can meet.
Okay, John, can you join us then?
Hello? Yes, I can join.
Okay, great, fabulous. Okay, so we will do, and Taylor, you can be there, right? Cheryl, can you make that meeting?
Is that the 13th?
This, hold on. That is.
I'm unavailable next.
You're not available. Okay.
It is the 13th.
The 13th. Um.
That would be by Zoom?
That would be probably by Zoom.
Selecting on the recording.
Yes, we could, that's great, that's great. Okay. Okay, so we'll let me touch base and make sure we're, I'll confirm it tomorrow morning. But let's assume that we're meeting next Tuesday. We're trying to make sure we give a committed block of time to design guidelines and anything we don't get to tonight. So I think if we add in one extra meeting, we should be able to stick to the rest of the regular meeting schedule and feel good about what we're submitting with the warrant. And Nick, to answer your concern about the 3A guidelines, since that is something that the planning board votes on ourselves, we want to have time to finish the North Main guidelines and then distill down what we feel is essential for the 3A. If we need to simplify, if we don't need to simplify, we can submit exactly what we have for North Main and we want to make sure we have time to get feedback. Design review was willing to look at it, but their timeline is.
Yeah, I thought I heard rumblings that they were starting to put some ideas together. So I want to make sure that we're able to integrate some of those ideas into the final, into our version.
Yeah, if you have ideas, let's, if there's anything that's ready to be mentioned when we talk next week, that's great. And otherwise, they're, they're, they will be very much involved in the, definitely the 3A process, so.
Okay, yeah, maybe we can have them, you know, join us for one of the meetings and go over what, what they've been working on. If they have, you know, to the extent, I don't know what they've done exactly, but
That's good.
I think that they're thinking about things.
Yeah, and we want to give them, we want to give them what we come up with for North Main to edit, so they don't have to necessarily generate as much.
Yeah, no, exactly. That's the other thing I wanted to, yeah, make sure that they don't have to actually do it from scratch.
Yeah, so, great. Good update. Um, any other updates from anyone? I don't think I have anything else. We're a couple of minutes early, but we could move to the minutes if there are no more updates. Any, the first set of minutes that we have to approve is for June 11th, 2024. Anyone have edits, corrections, comments? On the minutes from June 11th?
I don't, I've just accessed the link in the planning board agenda to the packet.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I guess I can see the two links to the minute, so I'll use that as well.
Yeah, it looks like the 11th. You're not listed as present, Nick, so.
Oh, right, solid, I won't, I will abstain, or it says access denied. I don't know, I don't know why I can't access that. Let me try the 24th.
Taylor's got them up on the screen right now.
Okay. Yeah, I'm having, I'm having trouble accessing the.
My link worked. Just, I just tried it. Can you open other links from the?
Let me see, meeting, the meeting materials opens a folder.
Okay, great.
And there's the planning board agenda and then everything else has its own folder.
I, I, from when I tried to access the minutes of required to sign in. So I don't know if that's what you're running to, Nick.
Okay, I'll have to figure out what.
I'll send the, those files directly to everyone just so you have them now.
Thank you.
Carrie, are you looking for a motion or are we waiting to send the files around?
Does everybody who, Nick, it looks like you're, you were not present at that meeting. Do the rest of us have access to the, to the, to the minutes and feel like we're ready for a motion? I'm happy to take one.
I'm happy to move that we approved the minutes of June 11th, 2024.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Brian?
Hi.
And Deab?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Nick?
Abstain.
And I'm an I. So we pass four. Sorry. Four with one abstention. And the meeting minutes for the 25th of June, Tuesday, the 25th.
That was when I was away.
Okay. That's okay. Are there any corrections, comments on the minutes from the 25th? I don't have any. I would take a motion if there are no updates.
Move favorable action on the planning board minutes of Tuesday, June 25th, 2024.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, photo finish. Cheryl, up to you.
Point zero five seconds in between them.
The third event of the 2024 Olympics that resulted in a point oh oh five split. Okay, roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Deab?
Yes.
Brian?
Hi.
Nick?
Abstain.
And I'm a yes. So again, four with one abstention, four yeas, one abstention. Okay. So far we are basically on schedule. We're three minutes ahead of time.
Don't drink, sir.
Don't worry, we'll lose this time soon, Deab. Do we have both of our Rangel Park Heritage District? I think we have them both here.
It's Christine and Jill, if you which one do you want to do first?
Looks like Colleen. Why don't we, so I, so so for our millions and millions of viewers at home, the Rangel Park Heritage District is a district that was created, I believe, by residents of the neighborhood and is maintained by, by a volunteer board of residents and members of the town who review changes to properties and actions that can be taken by the neighborhood to maintain the, the character and the historic nature of the district. So it's, their volunteer appointments and planning boards past have decided that the the planning board should sort of meet and I don't want to use the word interview, that seems, that seems a bit strong, but offer ourselves as a resource and hear about the candidates for the positions. It looks like Colleen McInnes is here for reappointment for another three-year term to the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission. So why don't we hear from Colleen first? I, Deab, anything in particular we want for information? This is a reappointment, so I think it's nice for the board to have the opportunity to thank you for your service and to offer ourselves as a resource if there's anything we can be helpful with, but we would be hard pressed to turn, turn away qualified, excited volunteers for these positions. So you, you guide me if there's particular information we want and otherwise we'll give Colleen the floor.
No, I'm just, I'm excited to hear about what's, what's been happening, what's going on with Rangel Park and how you fit in with the with the overall mission. So that's all.
Great. We have come? We may not have. I see Jill. Okay, so.
I would love to ask, before we do even do this, if Taylor or Deab or whoever's familiar with this most, could just tell us about the process of if this was posted, just how we get these names and does everybody in that sort of district have access to being able to apply? I'm thrilled with whoever wants to do it. I just don't understand how it was, how it's sort of set up and I'd just love to know that before we approve these.
So.
Christine Schmidt is a member of the, so let's, if we can unmute.
I guess, just to add to that question, are there two spots and two people?
Yes.
Okay.
But let's let Christine.
Hi, everyone. I'm Christine Schmidt. I am the exiting chair of the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission and I've served in that role since its inception in 2015. I wanted to attend just to be able to answer any questions you might have. Certainly, I'm thrilled that we have some candidates that are stepping up and interested. But if there's something specifically you'd like to ask, I do my best to answer.
Where did you post the positions to? How do you, do you sort of just know each other from the neighborhood or is it a public posting?
We have an email group for all of the participants in the district. And we periodically send out communications and let people know that we'd be very happy to hear if they're interested in serving. Aside from that, one of the folks up this evening, Jill, is a neighbor directly across the street from me, so I see her in person quite frequently. And I'm very pleased that she's interested in coming on board.
That's great. Any other, Brian, do you have other questions? Do you want to just learn about, no?
No, that, I think that, I wanted to understand how it was posted and, and just make sure everybody had, who, who might be interested would have known that they had the ability to apply for this position. It sounds like that was accomplished by email, so thank you.
Yep. Great. I don't see Colleen on here.
Yeah, nor do I. Colleen also has been on the group since 2015 and she's been a wonderful addition. I'm pleased that she's reapplying.
Great. So I think without, without her here, we could just take a motion to reappoint. Is that, is it a vote, Deab?
It is a vote.
Okay, so why don't we take them separately? And because one's a reappointment and one's an appointment. So if there's a motion to reappoint Colleen McInnes to the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission.
So moved.
For a three-year term, great.
Second.
Who, who had that?
Nick?
Great. Okay, so roll call vote. Brian?
Hi.
Deab?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So please thank Colleen for her continued service and she's, she's reappointed. And now let's take the opportunity to meet. So I think we have lost, did we get Taylor back?
Yeah, I'm back. I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, fabulous, great. So let's, let's say hello to Jill. And let me see if she's able to unmute herself. Great.
Hi, everyone. Apologies, I'm not going to be on camera. I'm battling and getting over COVID.
Oh.
I look as bad as I feel.
We'll be, we'll be mercifully brief. Just anything you want to, we have your lovely letter and anything you want to share about your interests or things you want to work on in the district or anything.
Sure, absolutely. I have lived on Meadowcroft Road for 22 years with my husband, Vittorio Ettore. We have two kids who have gone through the school district here and they are now both in college. And we just, from the day we stepped foot in this neighborhood, when we were looking at the house, fell in love with it and its uniqueness. It's, there's not a day that goes by that a family member, a friend, someone walking by or even a delivery person doesn't make a comment about this neighborhood. And I'm a recently retired tech professional and I've got more time on my hands and I said to Christine and my neighbor Maureen and David, I'm more than happy to contribute to this cause. I know many people who live in this neighborhood and would love to support keeping the uniqueness of it.
That's great. It's a beautiful neighborhood. Any questions for Jill before we any anything from the board?
I just want to thank you for stepping up to this position. We need a lot of people like you to make everything run in town and really appreciate your stepping up. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else from, any hands up, anything? Okay. Hearing none, I would take a motion for an appointment of, how, I don't want to mispronounce your last name, Jill Chiara, Chiara?
Yep, Chiara, very good.
An appointment of Jill Chiara to the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission for a term, would this be a three-year term? Or is this a three-year term? Okay, great.
So moved.
Great, thanks. And there's a second from Brian, I think. Okay, roll call vote, Brian?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Deab?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Thank you so much for stepping up to volunteer and you are so appointed.
Thank you so much, everyone.
I hope you're better soon.
Thank you.
Okay, great. A good role model community for other neighborhoods that may think about becoming historic districts. They've done an amazing job. I remember them coming before town meeting, I want to say. Whether it was 15 or 16, but very inspiring. Uh, we are now even more ahead of time. Do we have?
We can go, we can move on to CB, CBD Larry, are you okay if we start a little early? Sorry, I need to unmute you. Hold on. All right, you can unmute yourself now.
Hey, thank you.
Or, sorry, we, we didn't hear you. Are, are you okay if we start a few minutes early?
Oh, absolutely, yes, of course.
Okay.
Okay. And you're here for 648, 654 Main Street and 63 Vine Street, asking for an extension, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, what would you? You have the floor.
Make a brief presentation. Now, I did submit a letter on July 24th requesting the extension. This is a a decision that was made by this board for a special permit on property at 648 to 654 Main Street and 63 Vine Street. And the decision would have allowed for residential housing within the CBD district as well as maintaining a mixed use, including the Ace Hardware, which is run by the Ryan family, has been in business there for 97 years. Unfortunately, there was an appeal taken from this matter and that appeal lasted for 652 days and when appeals are taken, you know, under the the mass by law, it automatically extends the permit, but the problem is, is that during that period of time, there's been a lot of things I'm sure all of you are aware of that happened in the housing market. Multiple housing financing has been very, very difficult. The interest rates have expanded tremendously. And there also has been problems with costs associated with, with labor and, and supply chain issues. As a result of that, the petitioners who were planning to build this project were unable to get the financing together. And so this board did an excellent job appearing and putting together a 158-page decision. And we're hoping that with an extension, we will be able to find a developer, either the original developer or some other who can take on this project as the, what we hope will be a softening of the interest rates in the near future. I did go to the Conservation Commission and requested a, an extension of their order of conditions. And they did unanimously grant a three-year extension of the order of conditions. And I sent you a copy of that
Yes, we have.
Decision, which I recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And they extended it until July 9th of 2027. And this, of course, is a wonderful project that would, of course, not only give us an opportunity to have 36 residential units and two commercial units, but six of them would be deed restricted affordable units. And of course, it would also allow for my client, Fels Realty Inc. and Kevin Ryan to continue a family business that's been at that location for 97 years. So I respectfully would request this board to grant a, an extension of the permit for a period of three years. Or if they wanted to make a co-terminus with the decision that I recently received from the Conservation Commission, they could extend it to the same date as the Conservation Commission, which was July 7th of 2027. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions that this board has with reference to this request.
I'm looking at a picture of the, I guess, the proposal and it looks like 63 Vine is also going to be restored and included in the overall development.
That's correct. Yeah, one of the, the portions of the decision was requiring that building at 63 Vine to be restored historically and would be converted into two of the 36 residential units.
Great.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one, if I may go ahead.
Yes, please, Deab.
So I'm a little confused as to when this is actually, when the special permit is up. So I note from your letter that the decision, the appeal was dismissed on January 26, 2023. And, and so the special permit, if I can read state law, says that special permit granted shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than three years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal, et cetera. So can you tell what the original, was it a two-year permit that you got?
Yes, I believe that the permits that are granted by your board, special permits under our bylaw are two-year permits.
Okay, so that would imply that the, the current permit would come up as you say, in January of 25. And so you're asking, rather than waiting until January, you're coming to the board about six months early just to make sure you get it in time?
Well, I, I think in trying to get the, the marketing of this property out to interested parties, it would be difficult for a person coming in, looking at a permit that's expiring in a relatively short period of time as far as construction is concerned. So it would be much easier to market and find a developer if we were able to say to them that both the Conservation Commission order of conditions in the special permit have now been extended till 2027.
But you're, okay, so you're asking from three years from today, which would essentially be two and a half years from. um which would essentially be two and a half years from um when it would be expiring in January. I'm just trying to, yeah, because typically, yeah, because typically, I I believe just based on really poor memory, typically the board does two-year extensions. Um but you're coming in early enough, I can see why you would like the three-year because you're coming in a uh, you know, six months early, as it were.
And plus it it also um, you know, is is easier to uh explain to a particular developer who's coming forward to be able to say, look, we have these permits. Conservation Commission has extended it uh to um July of twenty twenty-seven, and the special permit uh is also extended for the same time, obviously. And both of those permits would be required in order to move forward with the project. So just seems from a marketing standpoint, uh it's more viable to do it that way. And uh I don't think it's necessary for me to certainly indicate to you, I'd be preaching to the choir uh to indicate how important it is for us to uh get some uh housing, especially in the CBD district. And this project uh would have been a a wonderful addition to the town and um and would be a compliment uh to the uh surrounding areas. Um and again, of course, would uh also allow uh Kevin Ryan's son to um continue um at that location uh as the next generation would take over the beloved uh Fells uh hardware store. Which was part of the uh of the special permit that the hardware store would be built on the first floor.
Brian?
Okay.
Or Deob, are you finished?
I am finished. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so I I guess my question is, I'm reading, I read through the letter that you gave to us. Um, the appeal was dismissed on January twenty-sixth, which then allowed you to have the full length of the two-year um special uh uh excuse, two-year permit uh through January of twenty twenty-five. Um I guess I'm sort of following up on Deob's question a little bit, which would be um, why would we? Why should we renew that permit now and not in January twenty twenty-five? And as a follow-up question, why would that be uh three years from now? Um, wh- why a full two-year extension from the end, two and a half year extension from the first two years? Um I'm just trying to understand, so that sounds like it'll be four and a half years, and I just want to make sure I understand the numbers and why, why are you requesting that now?
Okay, thank you, uh Brian. Yeah, so I would say the the um, again, it's a question of trying to explain to a particular um person who might want to go forward with this project to let them know that they have uh the Conservation Commission extension and they have the special permit extension uh to try to um market uh a uh a development uh uh for a bank or anyone else to finance. Uh if they saw a permit was ex- it was extended only through January this year, they're they're not going to finance it, of course. Um and it just seemed uh that there's no disadvantage to extending the uh special permit to the same time as the Conservation Commission extended their order of conditions. I I don't see any downside. And I think anything that we can do in order to um help improve the possibility of getting this building built, I think is something that is positive. And um and so I'm I'm hoping that uh this board will understand that uh we need this extension uh in order to market the property. And I I don't I can't think of any reason why the planning board would be reluctant to extend the permit for the same period of time as the Conservation Commission has extended their order of conditions. They really go hand in hand. Um, you know, we can't go forward without both of them. And um and I think that um it also is a statement in the sense that um that we want this kind of housing and we want to do all that we can in order to um have an environment, foster an environment that would allow these projects to go forward. Um, I obviously, you know, personally, I'm very disappointed that the project uh was not able to go forward, but during that two-year period of appeal, of course, obviously, a lot of things happened, as all of you are probably aware, in the financing industry and in the labor industry and the um supply of materials industry. And we've had an awful lot of stalled projects all over the the country, really, um uh because of that. And uh so I'm hoping that um this board will look at this project as an important uh uh decision that that this board has made. Um and uh it's a, as I say, a hundred and somewhat page long decision. And that in order to help this matter uh go forward, to give it the every best opportunity that it can, it just seems practical to extend it to the same time that the uh order of conditions has been extended, so that, you know, they're co-terminus. Uh and I I can't think of any, you know, good reason not to do that, and I would hope this board would consider it.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Deob, is your hand up again or is it up from before?
It is up again, but I I I just want to, I want to let anyone else who wants to speak with any questions. I just have a statement I'd like to make about the project, so I can wait.
John, Nick, anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Deob, go ahead.
Um, so I I a little bit of history on this project in the sense that I was on the board at the time. Um this came before us and um one of one of the things that I think we have to weigh is if we don't per- if we don't allow the special permit extension, what sort of project would come in? Would we get a project which would have the same level of quality, meet the same needs? It was a very lengthy process to get this project to the state it's at. Um, it went through a complete redesign. The design that that is in front of us now was not the original design. Um, they they went through a totally new architect. Um, we had a lot of back and forth. It there was there was a lot of effort putting into making this project, I think, the best it could be for that site. And I don't know that if we create a delay to move forward, that we would get anywhere near the quality. Or I think it would simply delay the next project by many years, because it would have to go through the same level of um inspection by this board. And so personally, I think it's worth giving the three-year extension, aligning it with the the COMCOM, so everyone's lined up at the same point. Because I just, I I think it we we need this this project um I think was tuned very well. It it really met the needs and the constraints that the planning board put on it. And I'm repeating myself, I think that if we wait to see if there's a different project or a better project, we'll be looking at another five plus years before we get something in front of us. So um I would, I would urge, you know, I think we should move forward. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I I I know a ton of work went into this. I think I was on COMCOM for this project, and I know the planning board worked very hard on this project and um I definitely have compassion for the town being tired of seeing the site sort of under underdeveloped and and, you know, sort of promises made that it was coming. And I know there's been a lot of projects that are pencils down, and hopefully the watershed moment is coming, and we either see the rate cuts that facilitate the building, or we just decide this is the funding climate and we just find a way forward. But um three, three years hopefully will be the last extension that that we will have to ask for. I know that's what you're hoping for. That's definitely what the board is hoping for, and that's definitely what the town is hoping for. Um, are there other questions or comments from the board, or are we ready to um to make a motion on this? Okay, hearing none, I would take, so I think our our uh our uh last discussion point is whether we should pick the date that the Conservation Commission has set, which I believe is July seventh?
Uh it's July eighth, yeah.
July ninth?
Yeah.
Uh so extending the the special permit to expire on July ninth of twenty twenty-seven? Or do we want to pick a different date?
Ask the board a question um above board members. Um, is there a downside to extending this for two years from today's date? Um, which would be typical. And then if in two years timeframe, we have an issue, they have an issue getting it funded and getting it moving forward, um then renewing it then. Uh it it feels like leaving this project sort of open-ended. Um, it's just a long time. I'd rather have something that we we hear back in, say, two years. Yeah, it's moving forward or no, it's not moving forward. Um, just feels like a long time to me. And I and I I I hear the argument that you need some amount of time. I just not clear why that would be three years, um when it was originally two years and we thought we could get this done. And then it was then um since January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, it's been um uh available uh and has not moved forward. So I I feel like two years, I'd be much more I don't want to see this project go down in flames, but I also feel like we should, two years would be very comfortable with that. And then um welcome them back in two years if they can't get it done in two years.
Mr. Mary, did you ask for three years of concert? If I remember correctly, that's just a quirk of Conservation Commission that they work in three years. Did you ask for three years or was that what was offered?
You know what? To be honest with you, I don't recall specifically without looking at my file if I requested three years, but my guess would be that um that I probably did. Um, I I don't think it was just something that they so espontae, you know, decided on their own.
Okay.
Uh I I probably did re- request a three-year extension.
Okay. Uh, I understand the the petitioners' request to keep them synchronized. Uh, just because it's easier to sort of say we have three years to build this thing. Um, but I think if the if the planning board piece of it is not, the Conservation Commission's protecting the waterfront, so they're sort of it's it's differently labor intensive. So if the if something hasn't happened in two years, we're thinking about whether or not we need to restart the whole process. So, I mean, we've asked for updates from people before who have extensions, so uh other thoughts from the board on the time point? Three years, two years, three years with an update?
It's it's really two and a half years from when the permit expires. I I understand coming in early, because if there's going to be a problem, you don't want to find out a week before the permit expires, you you know. I think it's, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the the timeframe. You know, it's not a uh it doesn't mean that a wholly different project doesn't come in for that site. You know, it's just an option. It's a it's it's very likely that you'll see a different project or a very altered, someone want to will want to alter this project. You know, it might not all be financing.
Okay, so we need a motion to uh extend with a time point. Is there, is there any other discussion on how long the the time should be?
Harry, I would um propose testing, seeing if the board is interested in approving a uh two-year from today extension of special permit. I would make a motion if that was something.
A two years from today is only extending the special permit from its expiration date for a year and a half. So that's not standard.
Well, it's two years, well, yes, the permit um has been active for a year and a half as well. Um, so uh
I I'm inclined to keep them synchronized, but I'm happy to entertain whatever motion is brought before the board.
I think keeping it synchronized makes some sense.
Yeah, I I I'm hearing that it's a, I mean, it's also a a a marketing thing, that it's cleaner to have them be the same date.
I I agree.
Well, I will not make a motion then because it doesn't sound like it has support, so.
I will take any motion.
I would move.
Extend this. Go ahead, please, Deob.
I I would move that we extend the special permit until uh what is the exact date of the COMCOMs? July?
Nine twenty-seven.
Until seven nine twenty-seven.
Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Deob?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Brian?
No.
Nick?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. So with four yeses and one no, the motion passes and you have your extension until July ninth of twenty-seven. But we're hoping for an update sooner, so keep us posted.
Absolutely. And I I assume that at some point uh um we'll be getting that uh decision so that we can, uh I don't know if we need to record it or not, but maybe we do. But I want to thank the board for all of their uh time and attention to this matter and for all the work that they give to the town of Winchester uh through their volunteer efforts and commend all of you for the fine work that you do. And thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight.
Thank you for coming in. Best of luck getting it going.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. And
Yeah, I I I think it, I think we should just be aware that it's been a difficult financing climate. I mean, interest rates are crazy. And just to say that it's the the delay is is for this, that, or the other thing. I mean, it's been uh I think a really tough time to get financing for anything. Um, whi- which kind of supported my desire to have the extension be at the same as the uh uh you know, the three years.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Taylor, can you answer the question about next step? You you issue it and send it to, what's the how, what's the next step?
Yeah, Larry, give me some time. I'll write up the decision for you and I'll send it to you as soon as I can.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your cooperation and help.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh everyone, if there's no objection to changing the order on the agenda, we have Jay Talaman Town Council here with us today to walk us through the steps of the A and R. Uh, so if there's no objection, I'd like to move that that agenda item to our next one.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So um Taylor, do you want to set this one up or do, should Jay or what's the better? It's the most succinct way to get this going.
Uh, we can do it in in tandem. So the um, so what what we have here is um an A and R for nineteen Hancock Street. Um, this is a uh project or this is a tr- you know, a an A and R ju- coming to the planning board, just like any other A and R, except the only difference is that the it's coming to the to the board with um uh with unbuildable, creating unbuildable or quote-unquote unbuildable lots, not non-conforming lots. The reason we're doing this is in order to save one historical structure. Uh, we can create um another lot, which is, which typically is non-not conforming. Um, and um and go through the 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 process that way. Deob, were you on the board when this was originally brought? Yep. Do you have any any context that you can share about when it originally arrived?
Um, yeah, so this this project came before us many, many years ago. And as a matter of fact, um the planning board wrote um the 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 waiver process in the zoning bylaw. Uh, this was the test case, and this was, we wanted to make sure that this property could be saved. And there wasn't a a mechanism to do so. So we actually um um presented to town meeting the amendment to the zoning bylaw to allow um subdividing properties which were not compliant or would not result in compliant lots. Um, if there was a historic or natural resource um which could be saved, and the the deal was that the property owner would have to put on a permanent restriction on the resource uh in order to preserve it. Um, and so that's, this has been we've been back and forth with the owners of Hancock over the years, refining the design, um talking about how the how the other property on this lot might look. Um, so I think this is a long time coming. I'm excited to see this. I have no idea if that gave the information you needed.
Yeah, that's helpful. Uh, and so I am, so as an A and R, our options are really just to take no a- take no action or recommend favorable or unfavorable action, right?
Well, you're It's a little more mechanical than that because if they show the requisite amount of frontage here, frontage. Being some being created in part through the special permit. You don't have any discretion of whether to grant or not grant. You have to endorse. It's an obligation. There's no discretionary component. I will note, however, that looking at the plan. That it is lacking in an important detail that is required under the zoning bylaw for which. They got the reduced dimensional treatment under the zoning board's decision. The um. The zoning bylaw requires that a note on the plan. Note the actual restrictions that are at play here. It's not doesn't constitute the restriction itself, but it helps support them. And here it only just says see special permit. That's not adequate unto itself. So hold on, I'm trying to get to the the bylaw itself or the zoning decision itself. Give me one second. So the zoning bylaw itself. States that a restriction must be shown on the plan. To be recorded, providing that the reduced frontage lot area and or side and rear setbacks. And any other lots created are subject to a special permit recorded therewith. That's not shown here. I think the requirement that normally I wouldn't necessarily be as concerned about. Word for word literal compliance, but it seems that to to me that that's in the spirit of this to provide notice.
So what would be the.
Essentially to all those that are interested. I think that the language I just read, which is again reflected in the zoning board's decision itself, almost word for word. Has to be. In the notes above uh below the signature block, you'll see where there's a note that says see special permit. I don't mind the see special permit. They have to expand upon it and note the that that special permit. Provides certain restrictions in exchange for the for the dimensional relief that they got. I mean, I would, if they just parroted the word of the zoning board's decision and the bylaw, that would be sufficient. And beyond that, I think the the obligation to endorse the plan is more or less set in stone.
DM.
I I just wanted to correct myself, nothing, nothing after what you said, Jay, but. This may not be the original house that we decided to work with for to get this through. I I think I'm a little confused. Um, I'm looking at the picture of this. And it's not the house that I remember, so this may be the second project that came before us. Um, I don't know. I'll have to go and do some more research. My apologies for misleading everyone.
But the division of this property is is the the. But you just remember a different plan for the home that will.
Yeah, no, I I think I remember a totally different lot. This does, when I look at the street view of this property, it doesn't look like the house I recall, which was. A a very different looking house, so I think I'm just. I got that one wrong and I'll try to figure out where they are.
This plan does match the plan. In terms of the dimensional relief shown that was before the the zoning board, so that the both Taylor and I looked at that.
Yeah, yeah, that's it's just my memory of the property I was talking about.
Okay, so if the. So the 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 point that you're bringing up is that. So. Would we postpone this and request the changes to the plans? Would we conditionally?
I don't think you can condition it really. I mean, you can note that that you will endorse it, but you can't endorse this plan because it. Requires a revision to that note. I think so long as the the applicant understands that and it's not a slight, you know, in the least, it's going to get an endorsement. But it should be faithful to the exact requirement of the zoning board decision in the bylaw and it's not.
Do we have anyone from the? From the. Property here? We don't have anyone represent. Oh, we do. Um, Brian, did you want to make a comment? Before we.
Yeah, so I had I had a question regarding uh the process um for for um Mr. Talaman. My understanding was. If for whatever reason the planning board did not take up. An A and R. That it would be approved by default and that the town clerk or a designated would sign it. Are you saying that we must actually endorse it? Like that's something we actually have to do or does our failure to endorse uh to do anything uh implicitly endorse it?
Well, there could be a constructive approval of of a plan. You know. We we never view that as. As a preferred path. I'd rather, I mean, personally. Have a plan endorsed by the board rather than a plan not endorsed by a board, but bearing a town clerk certificate that. The time that the clock expired. I think it's just better practice to endorse it. Regardless of how you may feel about this as a board in terms of the the um. The special permit and the planning board did make recommendations in the moment with respect to the special permit when it was before the board. Your obligation is to endorse. There's no discretion.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the board? We do have a petitioner here if we can hear from. Or someone's waving their hand. Wait, I lost you.
Go ahead, Daniel.
There we go, Daniel.
Hello, hi, everybody.
Hi, Daniel.
Um, so. I uh. Yeah, that that particular line in the decision, um. I'll have to go back and read it. But it it's, you know, it's no problem for us to reissue this uh. This plan and just include, it it sounds like you're saying, because obviously, you know, the full restriction is a lengthy.
No, yeah, you don't have to include that. You you pretty much just have to use word for word. What's required under the bylaw. No, no, you are not repeating or pasting in the historic preservation restriction. You're just kind of. Noting that exact language that's in their decision that this endorsement and it's in the bylaw too. If you need help with that. You know, you and myself and Taylor offline can give you can feed you the exact language. But that that language is gonna is gonna have to be on this. The board could vote to him to approve it subject. To the satisfactory language. We could see you next time, but when the board meets again with the corrected plan.
When is the next meeting?
We.
It's the next meeting where we normally would review, uh our next meeting will be probably August thirteenth. The next meeting where we normally review petitions would be September third. Um, and then we have a meeting, but I mean, we could, Taylor, we can do them off schedule if it's just a endorsement for something we've seen before, right?
So if you're meeting again, you know, I mean, if uh. You know, Jay, I would defer to you, but if you're saying it's cleaner to just endorse the um the plan, it has the correct. Information on it rather than having all kinds of conditions following on. We can have this, you know, probably hopefully resubmitted in a couple of days and um. We could just.
That's the best idea. I think that's smart.
For you, for the full landscape of meetings, we're meeting on August thirteenth, August twentieth, and September third. So.
Yeah, so if we could be on the agenda for the August thirteenth meeting and um. Go through this again, that would be great.
It seems like it would be, uh it we've had most of our questions answered, so we would really just need to review the language and and vote to endorse, so I think that seems. Reasonable to add on to that meeting unless there are objections or concerns. From the board.
That's fine with me. Um, I do have some other. Uh, questions for Jay while while I was here. I don't know if it's if it's appropriate, but it's about basically the the steps of. After the A and R is. Endorsed and then. Basically, the sequencing and the triggers of. The A and R um getting recorded versus the preservation restriction getting. You know, executed by the select board and and recorded and referencing all these recorded documents.
Yeah, I think let's handle that offline. I don't want to, that's not so much a planning board issue, not saying it's not of interest to the planning board, but I know they have. Other items on the agenda and that that kind of stuff. We can between myself um uh and you and and Taylor, we can probably sort sort that out.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we are we are postponing this item until next week. Anything else from the board? The petitioner, Jay, Taylor, anybody else on this item?
In order to be the, in order to speed this up next week. Um, if either, obviously, Taylor and and or uh Jay can just tell us that the wording is exactly what it needs to be, then it sounds like it should be a a trivial matter on our part.
Yep, I'll we'll we'll make sure Dan will get us the. The language that he's going to put, we'll we'll guide him if we have pretty straightforward.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all for popping in. Appreciate it. See you next week.
Thank you.
Jay, you probably don't need to be at that.
Thanks.
Um, I just want, I found the original property. It's eighty nine Harvard, not Hancock.
Similar situation, though?
Uh, it's pretty similar. I just sent Taylor a photo from Google Maps. You can see what the building looks like if you'd like, but. Um, it's it's in it's in bad shape, but it's a. A very historically important um house from the traditionally African American part of town. And so it's a, so anyway, that's that's the lot. So so that was the original building. Okay, thank you.
Wow, interesting. Okay, uh. Back to Richardson Street, yeah? Or do you want to make a, do you want to say anything about the roadway improvement while we're in subdivision slash other? It's up to you.
Sure, well, the we have, I actually have a a request to um. To go to uh. Winter for swim if no one from sixty two is available tonight. Is that okay with you, Carrie?
Fine with me. Does anyone on the board object to making our next agenda item Winchester Stone Club?
Sounds good.
Great. We must have people here for that, yeah.
Katie and Mark, I don't know, Mark, I don't know if you want to, either one of you.
Hi, everybody.
Katie, why don't you start? Yeah.
How are you all? Thanks for having us. Um, hi, I'm Katie Snyder. Um, I am a member at the Winchester Swim and Tennis Club. Um, I've been on the board for the last two or three years. I've lost track now. Currently serving as sort of the facilities director. Um, and I've been helping the club with some um capital improvements over the last couple of years and. We are um planning to be before the zoning board next week. Um, Mark can jump in if I miss anything here, but. We have a aging building. The club was formed in, you guys cut me off if I'm going too long, but just to give a little history on the project in the in the facilities. Um, the club is formed in the mid nineteen sixties. We actually just recently updated the tennis courts this past year, right before their fiftieth birthday. Um, with new surface and um sort of. In the same vein, the the clubhouse, like as we like to call it, but it's a pretty small facility that provides, um, you know, bathrooms and an office and some storage and a snack bar. Um, for the members is right adjacent to the pool. Just to orient you on this plan that's up on the screen. Uh, Johnson Road is on this um plan south. And um, you know, the the pool is just north of what's shown as the proposed clubhouse. But I'll just add that the the club, again, formed in nineteen sixty five, today has about three hundred and fifty families that um that's it's it's a nonprofit, but private club. Um, namely serves mostly Winchester families or some others that are not um within the town. And our proposed clubhouse really is um. Really there to replace what we already have in terms of function. So like I said, bathrooms, office, storage, and snack bar. Um, we went through some iterations over the last year to replace the clubhouse. We have some roof leaks. We have a lot of, you know, pieces of the building that are really starting to age and we quickly learned that. Just fixing things was not the answer after this many years, it's passed its useful life. And then furthermore, as we as we studied it architecturally, we learned that in order to meet today's latest codes by way of. Fixer counts and bathrooms, needing the snack bar, the snack bar really needs to get. Uh, up to current standards for food preparation and cleanliness. We need a three bay sink. A lot of things we've been grandfathered in for many years, Board of Health, but we'd literally like to make. This new facility meet all of those requirements. We know it needs to meet all of those requirements, so. As we studied the building and the footprint that we have today, we learned we needed to kind of rotate it. You can sort of see, I don't think, I mean. Able to point, but you can see the outline of the existing footprint of the building and now we're just. Stretching it a little bit and turning it. The clubhouse is growing about a thousand square feet from what we have today to kind of accommodate cumulatively all of those code updates. And I'll just add the only other sort of major. Um, additional say is that today we have a um sort of up against the clubhouse, we have a metal awning structure, which we intend to swap out with. Um, actual hard roof. Um, a little bit more of a permanent structure. Um, we do have some renderings if it's helps tell the story, but. We learned in late in late June that um. In order to build this project, we not only had to go to Conservation Commission, which we did do, and we were able to get approval from Conservation Commission in July. Um, but we learned we also needed to go back for a modification to our special permit. Because of the fact that we're rotating the building and and modifying. So that is why we're here before you tonight. Um, our goal for this project, if we can get through some permitting, is to start construction in the fall. It's a seasonal club. It's only open a few months out of the year. Um, so if we're not able to get through permitting, we won't start construction until um. Fall of twenty five, but if we're able to get through permitting, we plan to start construction right away to build this facility. That's my quick recap. Mark, did I miss anything that might be relevant?
No, I think that's a very uh good synopsis. I I think it to to the point of what what's been filed for is a special permit. The property is located in the SCI zoning district. Similar to Winchester Country Club, for example, which is in an SCI district. This use is allowed in that zoning district by way of special permit. I think in this particular instance, although we're not really, it it's a new, the the clubhouse building is there today. Uh, but since the footprint of it is being shifted a bit from the current footprint, the building commissioner has taken the position that we would need a new special permit. Um, for that building, even though the building is going to be serving the same purpose as the as the current building does today, but. Like as Katie mentioned, just trying to really bring it into this century in terms of of the features and updates that are necessary and that people would expect and. Are also code compliant, so um it complies with all applicable setback requirements of the SCI district. Well in excess of any of the dimensional requirements in terms of setbacks and things of that nature and. The overall height of the building as well, um as well as as well below the the maximum height for that zoning district.
And we are also, I didn't mention this, but obviously it came up um in detail with the Conservation Commission, but. We are also um. Updating the landscape in and around the building. We're providing for um additional handicap spaces, so we are fixing a little bit of the parking lot up against the edge of the building. And we are making sure to address all of the kind of current stormwater. Regulations that exist today that obviously the current facility just does not do. Um, so we're infiltrating and, you know, collecting water from the roof and infiltrating that. Um, so that was all reviewed with engineering and Conservation Commission.
Great, DM, you have your hand up.
Yeah, um. Thanks, I was, I know that, um, for instance, the special permit. Yeah, um, thanks. I was, I know that, um, for instance, the special permit that the boat club operates under has some extra constraints on it. Um, are, I, we don't, I don't see the special permit for yours, the actual original one. Was it simply, there was no other things about, you know, views or anything like that, which we would have to consider? It was merely because this was a different use?
Yeah, uh, I can maybe comment on that. The, the special, i- it was a, um, it wasn't called a special permit back then. It was called a special exception. It was a, a permit was granted back in nineteen sixty-five. Um, before the zoning bylaw, I think even addressed special permits. So at the time, I believe the property was zoned um single-family residential, so it actually preceded the current SCI zoning district, but um I, I can't say that I've addressed every element of the decision, but um it was a, a different scenario then in terms of um you know, the, the, being a different zoning district and it was allowed by a way of a special exception permit, which was the, the predecessor to today's uh special permit, but um, I'm not aware of anything particular or unique in there uh that addresses it, so.
Okay. I presume council has, our town council has looked at this, so um thank you. Whoops, that's the wrong one.
What, what triggers Concom? What are, what body of water are you on?
Good question. There is a stream and I could point that out um on the plan if you happen to have it, Taylor. Um, there's a stream that runs adjacent to the clubhouse. Um, yeah, so we were, we are, the building and the pool is all within the um hundred-foot buffer. Not with, not within the twenty-five-foot um no-build zone. It's close, but not within it. Um, also, part of the reason that we, you know, are obviously keeping the proposed facility very proximate to where it exists today, we're trying to change, we're trying to limit the amount of change to what we already have. Um, and also it's, you know, we're n- we're not intending to touch the pool or the pool deck. Everything else kind of around the facility is going to remain. Um, and so again, the clubhouse serves the pool namely, so, you know, keeping it in that position made a lot of sense, but there is a um body of water to the left on this plan of the proposed building.
Great, thank you. Brian, your hands up.
Yeah, I think you, you may have just answered my question, Katie. Um, are any trees being removed for either this or other work um on the site as a result uh to do this work?
Good question. We walked this with conservation as well. There's two birch trees that are really close up against the existing building um that reside within the hundred-foot buffer that do, that are impacted as well as, um, and you can sort of see it on the plan, it's referenced, well as um an oak tree that is gonna be very, very close to the new clubhouse um exterior wall. And we know that the root system will be impacted. So we have three trees that are impacted. We discussed that with conservation at length and, you know, we are working, I, I couldn't quote, I should know how many trees we're adding, but if you look at the landscape plan, you can see it's pretty robust and that we're replacing a lot of trees and shrubs. Um, and filling that front yard with a lot of plantings. Um, and we're able to kind of work through that with conservation as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Comments from the board? Okay, so we would be voting to approve the special permit or an update, an amendment to the spe- what's the language that we're looking?
Favorable action.
Favorable action. Okay, it's not approved, but, okay. Okay, so I would take a motion to recommend favorable, unfavorable, or not make a, not take action on this.
I would move favorable action on special permit number. Somebody help me with the special permit number.
Forty-two, forty-twenty.
Forty-twenty for one oh five Johnson Road.
Is there a second? Any other comments on the motion? Uh, roll call vote? Uh, Dab?
Aye.
Uh, Brian?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well, so it passes unanimously and good luck with the project.
Thank you so much. Appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, can I ask who seconded that motion?
Uh, John, I think.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so I think next we have sixty-two Richardson Street. So we don't have anyone here. Do we have someone here from that project?
If anyone is here, can you raise your hand?
So this we have seen.
Can we do the roadway improvement and then, because we have someone here for that?
Okay, sure. Yes. Uh, so I think you should tee that up, that's.
Okay, so what, what we have is um Ardley Road, roadway, roadway improvement plan. Um, what we're, what we're gonna be doing tonight is we're gonna, we're just gonna have a discussion on what this process is gonna be, because it's going to be a new one, not just for this planning board, but for our planning in, planning in general. So what we, what we have is our, um, Ardley Road, um, if anyone is familiar with it, let me try to talk and bring it up on uh maps at the same time. Um, we have, uh, we have a roadway, a roadway improvement request, which means that we're gonna be looking at a roadway improvement without the subdivision of land. So what the planning board is typically used to is when a subdivision comes in, you look at the subdivision of land and the, and the uh development of a new roadway to access that land. That's what a subdivision is. Uh, also for reference, an A and R is also a subdivision of land, but it's not creating new roads. So um, so what we're, what we're, what we have here is just the creation of a new road without the creation of new lots. Um, now the, now the interesting thing is with roadway improvement plans, they're very typical. Um, here's Ardley. So here's Lynch, um, is over here. Here's Pond Street. Uh, we come down Woodside and Ardley is down here. What we're, ignore the pin and look at this, this area right here. Um, this is uh currently a paper road, um, so it's, it's, it's not, it, 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 it's not maintained, but it is, um, it is a, it is a, a quote-unquote accessway. Uh, but it's not leading to, to, to any homes. So roadway improvement plans are typical in other towns, uh but Winchester does not have a formal process for a roadway improvement plan. So when someone comes in and says, I want to uh redevelop the road, uh, we need to take a uh, a step-by-step process in order to, to permit that, that road. So the purpose of bringing this up now is because we are in conversations with the person who wants to do this road. And the planning board is going to be the ultimate special permit, the special permit granting authority. They're gonna be the granting, the permit granting authority for, for the final road. So it's important for we, for all of us to know that this is going to be coming up. And as we, um, as, as the process moves along, uh, you're probably gonna continue to be, be informed. Now then, we're gonna take an approach much like we do with a with a subdivision. So you're going to get comments from the uh Conservation Commission, you'll get comments from engineering, you'll get comments from the ZBA, you'll get comments from the Health Department and the Fire Department. You're gonna take all those comments in, just like you normally would with a subdivision. You're gonna make a determination on whether you should approve or not approve uh approve the, 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 the road. Also, it's important to know that just like a subdivision, you will be on a, you will be uh on a deadline in order to complete this. Uh, just like a subdivision, the definitive process is forty-five days, forty, forty-five days. Um, I think that's right. Uh, and it will be the, it'll be the same as, as what that is too. Don't, I'm here to coordinate it all for you and I'll put it in, in, in front of you, but just so you all know, you will be responsible for um, for granting the, the authority there. We are, we are wa- awaiting the permanent, the preliminary, um, uh, excuse me, the definitive um uh application and that will, will come in uh shortly or soon, but it will look something like this and we'll have a lot of help from engineering and, and, and everyone else involved. So any questions? Go ahead, Brian.
Um, so this is going to be a road. Well, it already is a road, it's a paper road, but it's going to be a, a finished road if approved, that connects to pre-existing lots or there no lot? That's an issue for another day. Um, what it connects to.
Yep, so you're in an interesting position, so regardless of, so it won't connect to anything. It will, but existing lots, it will, but existing lots. But um, besides the grading of those lots, um, the, you, it, that's not a part of what you're considering for uh for, for this roadway improvement plan. Something may come up down the road and I'm very sure that that is the reason why they're here. Uh, but that's not a part of this um, this consideration.
Okay, that's helpful. And um, out of curiosity, just to understand the process that's being laid out. Um, if the roadway is improved, uh, approve, uh, we, if we approve the roadway improvement, um, who is the permit granting authority for down the road um that connecting to lots? Because you said, as you said, that's not part of this process. Is that something that goes to the ZBA then? Or is that, um, is that something that's beyond our plate at a later time?
So if any, if any lots are gonna be subdivided, it'll come back to you. If any, if anything is going to be built, uh, that will be ZBA. If it needs, uh, unless it's by right, but, but it, it, it's either gonna be, yeah, things, things that are being built is, is ZBA, things that are gonna be subdivided, land, it's gonna be you.
Okay, thank you. That very helpful.
Yeah, I, I find this rather interesting because this lot has come before the planning board a number of times in the past. Um, and so this I, I presume that after this road is put in, I'm wondering, is there sufficient frontage once this road is put in to subdivide the lot?
Probably, but I don't know that for sure. I would, I would have to say just eyeballing it, yes, but, but I don't, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I know there's, there's, we've, the, we've had a number of conversations with the neighborhood as well as the property owner in this lot for a number of years. Um, so it's, this is an interesting development.
A- a- as the, as the neighborhood expressed any um feeling one way or the other?
Uh, the neighborhood, we've actually been hearing from people within the neighborhood for years now that they want this wrapped up as soon as possible. The, the current conditions of the road are not great. Um, and the current conditions of the properties that are surrounding the road are uh not slightly.
But one of the lots was made unsightly by a clear cutting. So that was a deliberate choice by the owner.
Here's, uh, here's what it looks like now. Well, I don't know when this image was taken. Actually, this is before I think one of the houses was built. But here's, here's the paper street. See, it's even signed. Um, it goes down there. I think. I, I encourage you to take a drive, drive over there, just to see what, uh, what we'll be looking at.
Yeah, you can also get to the back of the property through this, through the uh um shoot, through the cemetery. You can just look right at.
Oh, yeah, and, and um, this will be a public process. It'll be a joint public process between the planning board and the Concom. Uh, planning board members won't have to uh join that public process because they'll be run under Concom uh meetings, but it will be a way to um, I'll, I'll, I'll be at them and maybe Carrie or Brian will too, but it's their Concom meetings, but, but there'll be uh a public process for a planning board too. Um, I would like to give uh Bill the opportunity to, he's, he's, he's um on this project. If, if you want to speak up, you can, not, um, you don't have to say anything.
Uh, hi, sorry, I, I don't have uh my camera uh available tonight. I, I I just wanted to listen in. I knew Taylor would do a fine job and he de- and he has. My name is Bill Proia. I'm from uh Remon Bronstein. And I am representing uh the applicant on this project, so now I don't really have much to add to that. If anyone has questions for me, it is um, I, I, one of the members who is, uh, made some comments about the project or this has been before the board before and sort of various postures, I guess. And there's just a, there's a statute under the subdivision control law that controls this. And I don't think that had ever been presented before to the town. And so that's sort of led us to the situation. And just the statute just in some just says that if there's a recorded plan, whether it was land court or, or not land court. But that had been recorded or registered before the subdivision control law was adapted, uh, was adopted in a specific community. Then that has to be considered an approved subdivision plan, just for the purposes of the road. And and any lot that was shown on the plan. So that, that's what brought us here. This is just an old lot. It's an old land court plan. And it just shows this paper street. And so thereafter, there's a couple of cases that interpret this and Taylor summarized the process very succinctly and accurately. Is that the planning board in the particular community, Winchester being one of many, many, as you can probably imagine, has the authority to review the road and to be sure that the road complies with the typical standards that would apply in a traditional subdivision. And that's, that's really it. So we've, we have vetted this with town council. He's seen the, the analysis, all the title documents and plans. So now it's just, we're, we're working with the town, the departments to create a process for the proper review and approval of the, of that segment of the roadway. And that, that's really the background, sort of the legal background of it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but again, Taylor's been involved in this for many months and has a thorough grasp and understanding of it, so I would um not really have to add anything to his presentation at this point. Thank you.
And again, we're, we're not, no decision or anything, uh, just letting you all know about what's, what's coming up, because a lot of pieces that Bill has, Bill and the petitioners have been very patient with us. Um, a lot of pieces have fallen into place uh rather quickly internally over the last two, three weeks, so you'll start hearing about this more. So it's imperative to, to let you know about the process.
Great, thank you. Um, any other questions or comments from the board, petitioner Taylor on this? Okay. Coming events, um, definitely one that's probably worth driving by or going out to look at. Um, Okay, ready to move on? So we have lost our time advantage. Uh, we have uh one less, one last item to get to on the agenda, which is sixty-two Richardson. And uh, so sixty-two Richardson is the single family home that is proposed to be torn down and. Turned into a duplex and the issues that have come before us are that it has failed to meet the criteria of unified massing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and Taylor, what's our most, what's, what, what has to happen today?
Just a normal Z B A. Uh, recommendation.
I- is there uh, is there any way to bring up the uh Winchester code bylaws? Uh, ten point one. Which has the definition of dwelling duplex and it has some drawings of. Structures that are.
Examples of unified.
Fully integrated versus not. And I, I'm not sure how to, how to get it. But the 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 drawings are really helpful.
This is in, this is in chapter ten, so definitely.
Chapter Winchester zoning bylaws, chapter.
It's definitions.
In definitions, okay.
Section ten point O definition, ten point one definition, and it's the definition of dwelling duplex.
Mm-hmm.
And it has. Yeah, yeah, so it has the three drawings of. Examples of structures that are fully integrated, coherent and unified massing. Examples of specters that do not have fully integrated, coherent and unified massing.
Mm-hmm.
And so I guess that's what we're, that's what we're. Using. To to uh to make a determination, I think.
Could I ask, yeah, could I ask a point of clarification along those lines? I, my, my reading of the packet was that the building commissioner rejected, denied the um permit. Because it didn't have a unified massing, is there been a a redesign and a resubmission, is that why we're here?
Uh, yeah, yep, so. Uh, oops. Um, so everything, everything here is new, uh uh everything, um. Those, those plans are new, we have new, new renders, um so these, these are all new.
Right, but why is this, is this, I'm still don't understand why this is before us, has the permit?
Oh, sorry, that, yeah, uh they, so, so when, when you, when you sign on uh to June something. Uh, they then uh, they then retracted their. Their application. Uh, and resubmit it, so it's a new, it's technically a new. Uh, it's technically a new application.
And 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 right, so, but nominally, so why is it, is it here because the size of the building puts it under site plan review? I forgot, Nigel read it this afternoon. Because originally, we didn't see it before it got to the building department, right? The building department denied the permit. And so um they are seeking site plan review, okay, thank you. So it still hasn't. The the building commissioner still hasn't weighed in on whether or not this has appropriate massing? And.
Well, I think that's, I mean, I don't think that's the building commissioner's determination, isn't that the Z B A's? Responsibility to determine that?
Well, I'm just trying to under.
I think that the building commissioner.
How did the first denial?
I think he insinuated that it would be denied by the Z B A and then they pull, they they retracted their application and now they're back with one that. They think would pass.
Um, okay, uh let me, let me go. Let me go and review my men- my memory of this.
Is this um that you're showing, is this under renders?
Yes.
Okay.
Render's revised.
Okay, maybe I'm confusing this with another one. Well, here's an application denial. From the building commissioner on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. And it was, it was a direct denial. So. I'm still trying to understand the process here.
But that's, that's what brings it into. Into special permit, there's always a denial before, before it goes to special permit. Or site plan review, site plan review, sorry. Right, if it was accepted, it wouldn't have to go through site plan review.
Okay, um, I mean, there's a very strong statement in the letter from the building commissioner, which is uh according to section ten. Well, et cetera, the units must be fully integrated into a coherent unified massing, your design does not meet that definition. So that was a pretty clear determination by the, so we're still, okay, so I'm just, I'm just. A little confused as to why this design hasn't gone through the same process. Whereby the building commissioner would have made a decision as to whether it meets that criteria. But, you know, it's before us now, I just, I'm a little confused by the process.
Go ahead, Brian, I'll 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 try to find more doc- documentation.
Is it possible we could bring up the, bring up the revised plan document uh dated July eighth? Um, because the renderings are interesting, but they come from um sort of corner angles. And I think the revised plan um actually shows us more blueprints of what I'm more used to seeing, um. If you go down to maybe about six pages down into that, there's some um. Side views. Next, next one, next one, sorry.
This does look like a new design from what they've done before, they've brought the roof up to address the split that was between the units before.
This is the new one.
This is the new one here, and then the next page, I think, is also the new one. I think this is the, I think this is the revised design, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it still has two separate roofs, it's still not unified massing, but the roof, the the space in between the two peaks is higher. So it, I agree, this looks like it's a different version.
I also noticed that they don't have a rendering of this elevation, none of their rendering shows the split head on.
That was what I was trying to get at, that I thought those were at an angle, all those renderings.
Right.
To um, which I think is uh confusing.
Which, which one is missing? I'm looking at. You should have four elevations, right?
Yep.
Which one's missed, so we have, that's one.
The elevations are complete, it's the renderings that are.
Rendering, the renderings are from the corner, so you don't see sort of side on view, the, at least I didn't see them, they might be in there.
Yeah, if you go to the uh. The document, which I think says rendering. Yeah, that one. So the, yeah, that was, you don't really see the full-on view of that split. If you keep going, the other side of the house, you don't, there is no real. View of the other side of the house. As far as I could tell.
I couldn't see it as well as why I, why I mentioned the blueprint instead.
Yeah, I mean, and from my perspective. Um, no pun intended, um, I still think this, this doesn't meet the definition of a unified massing.
I totally concur.
Yeah, I think they've moved from the center example of not unified massing to the left example, not unified massing.
But they still got a little bit of the center example.
I mean, it's not terrible, but it's still quite there.
Yeah, it's progress.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the parking has improved. I am concerned about, um, I think the, I don't understand, they're, are they going to have an easement to allow that shared driveway? Um, that's, that's a concern I have. Um. But they do have to avoid um having two driveways onto the street to avoid taking out the tree.
Well, they. Isn't the driveway cut for this project limit, isn't the limit twenty feet?
That should be, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like it's, I mean, what, what, what we're all looking, what I'm looking at now looks more like forty.
Oh, which, which page are you on?
The picture, the rendering.
John, they, 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 they cut it out, they, they cut it out, so.
Well, I see, so they, you're gonna navigate. The left there, well, you know.
Yeah, that's the thing I find a little, I mean. That seems awkward.
But they have to do that because they can't touch this tree here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So um, if it's before us in terms of site plan review. I um. Guess we could go through the criteria. I'm, I'm just, I don't know where the um definition of it meeting the, you know, cohesive. Design that, is that part of our site plan? I don't think we have.
I mean, you, you can also say that you don't, I mean. This is an option for you all, you can say you don't, you, your, your opinion has not changed since six eleven or whatever it was. Because that's what it sounds like to me, it sounds like your opinion hasn't changed.
Doesn't, it, it, can we, can we make a a motion that that doesn't uh meet the criteria of a unified massing?
That was our last decision, so the, the. We would be upholding.
Our last decision technically was to agree with the building commissioner that the structure does lack coherent. Unified massing as required, um since we don't have an opinion from the building commissioner um regarding this revision. I think we just want to be clear that this would be sort of a new decision that that we don't think. Regardless of what a building commissioner thinks or doesn't think, um, because he has opined on it, that we know.
I mean.
So I, I think Nick's motion fits that bill.
Mm-hmm, okay, is there a second for Nick's motion?
I will second it.
Uh, is there further discussion?
I don't, I think I missed what the motion was, I'm, I'm so sorry, I, I.
It's a statement that the building, uh, how, how?
It does not meet the requirements for unified massing under, under uh. What, whatever that definition is.
Dwel- dwelling duplex.
So, but, oh, okay, I just want to know if we're recommending, also recommending, therefore unfavorable action. On the special permit as a result, or just opining on that it doesn't meet that definition, but not recommending anything.
Well, we're looking, it's, it's for a um, it's for site plan review. So we, so we could go through the criteria. And um move through those as well, I mean, I think we might find that. Some of the um requirements of site plan review are met, which would maybe speed things up next time if this comes through again, or.
We should let them know what they need to work on.
Okay. Uh, let me open the checklist.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a bad design, I guess, um.
You know, we need to. You know, kind of do this, have them come back one item by the time, we should try to give them a better, a, a, you know, a list of what it is we don't like.
Yeah.
Maybe they can come back and address all the items at once, you know, move forward.
Think I have too many things open to, oh, does any, anyone have it faster than I can get it open here? Okay. There we go, thank you. Okay, sorry, this is.
I mean, can we just say that the, the, the center roof line needs to be uh.
Unify the roofs, yeah.
At the same height, it, it just needs to unify the roof by the center roof line. And 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 just have that be it and be done with it and vote, you know, vote and and and.
Okay, let's just cruise through the um, the other criteria and make sure that we, so we're, we're commenting on the unreasonable departure from. Not really, we are, I think for the scale of buildings in the neighborhood and the character of buildings in the neighborhood. I don't think the character is that far off.
No.
Form within the building itself, there's no historic resource involved, I don't believe. Uh.
Uh, that's yet to be determined, that we, we, we don't know that, so you, you, you can't, you can't answer that yet. Historical has not voted.
Oh, okay.
I thought, I thought. Okay.
They're, they're voting like within the next fifteen minutes, but they, 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 they have not voted.
Uh.
I thought, I thought, I thought I said something on that, but I'll take, I, I believe you, I thought there was some, a document in here regarding.
I thought there was a demo delay.
Yeah, I thought there was.
There, there, they may vote to remove the de- the demo delay, so I, I encourage you to just skip number two.
Let's skip number two. Uh, volume of cut and fill, removed number of trees, six inches in caliber, are they preserving that tree or is that one that they're planting? And what else is being removed?
As far as I know, they, all trees are being. Retained, I didn't see any notes of trees being removed.
Yeah, I don't think there's much on the property and they're dodging the one that's on the street. All right, and then.
Um, now there's a. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't actually ru- read their, oh, there we go, never mind. Uh, one conifer tree to be removed on Salem Street.
On Salem Street or on the property on the Salem Street side?
It's on the property on the Salem Street side.
Okay.
It's the one right in the middle of the block or the middle of the lot.
Oh. Okay, so it sounds like they're, they're minimizing, there's, I mean, it's a hundred percent tree removal, but it sounds like if it's in the middle of the lot. There's not a way.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's on, it's, it's, it's in the middle of the frontage, it's about five feet from the lot, from the lot line. So it's right along the street, so that would be. Um, you know, one could talk and it looks, I can't tell how long, how wide it is because. I just don't see a number on there that I can read.
Okay, well, we're sort of sending it back to them anyway, so we could get a size on the tree, that could be a comment we could make.
I think it's twelve inches, it's a twelve-inch diameter tree.
Oh.
That's a pretty substantial tree.
Yeah, that's an old tree, okay, so we would like um. To hear about efforts to retain the tree.
You bet.
The possibility for retaining the tree. Uh, anything about fill, um, has engineering gone through this for stormwater management?
Uh, we do have department comments from engineering. Um, engineering says it'll be a nominal increase in impervious area. Um. They talk about the removal, possible removal of the shade tree, the narrative states that two trees will be removed.
Mm-hmm.
The plan should call out the two trees subject to removal, and I found one, but I don't know. Where the other one is, so we should, they should definitely tell us which one's going. Where the other one is, so we should, they should definitely tell us which one's going.
Mm hmm.
Um, but I don't think there's, I don't see that the special permit is due to, um. The change in slope, unless I misread that.
I don't believe so.
No.
Okay.
Okay. We, you said stormwater management commented not much change in impervious surface, pedestrian and vehicular safety with the janky turnaround. Seems necessary to keep the tree, but other than that. It's a side street, right?
Yeah, and there there should be going pretty slowly as they enter their driveway, I hope, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Yep. Adequate access to structure for fire and emergency service equipment.
Uh, it's a corner lot, there should be enough access for fire trucks on either side.
Yeah, should be fine. Um, visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, utilities, transformers, outdoor service areas from public ways or premises residentially used or zoned.
Well, so that's a tough one, because their rendering show, you have this large chunk of. Driveway. With four garage doors lined right up next to each other, so.
Mm hmm.
Unless they're going to put some sort of, um. Plantings along the road.
Strip.
Yeah, that was a very narrow strip, but I just, you know. I would be concerned about what that looks like from the, from the street.
It does look like the driveway is more narrow than the garage and there's green, but I can't tell if that's lawn or it looks like that's lawn and not landscaping. It seems like there could be some effort to close off it, to to shield at least one bay from view. Maybe two.
Yeah. It would be really good to have a, um, a street level. Well, I guess we have the, we have the elevations, don't we? But.
Well, you don't, yeah.
They've got a tree in the middle of their. They render a tree. That's right in the between. Two garage doors.
Yeah.
That is bizarre. That is gonna cer- that's not gonna last more than a couple of seasons.
Yeah, that seems a little. Yeah, that's that's not gonna last. Uh, so the landscaping plan could be revisited.
Yeah, for better shielding of the of the, uh, of the driveway and the garage.
Yeah, and the maintenance and sustainability plan for the strip of landscaping between the two properties or between the two driveways.
I have a feeling that's gonna be.
We're just curious about that.
Yeah. There are gonna be some cobblestones stuck in asphalt.
Yep, glare from headlights and lighting intrusion. I think that could be covered by the landscaping plan. I don't know their orientation of their neighbors.
I. I think it would be.
I mean, the the houses across the street from those garages are looking at the garages there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is a pretty tight neighborhood. Everybody's headlights. Going to everyone else's yards, so I don't know there's much they can do.
Mm hmm.
I mean, they're, yeah. It's pretty narrow.
Backing into two of those driveways will be pretty much impossible, um, unless you're like a, a.
NASCAR driver.
Fancy driver, NASCAR driver, I was gonna say, I don't know if that's already, gonna say that, but getting into those would be pretty hard.
They can drive fast. Can they, can they drive carefully into a garage?
I don't know that.
I don't know about backwards. Hopefully that doesn't come up for them very often. Uh, okay, so good, so we've got to keep going. The, um, contamination of groundwater from wastewater, I'm assuming engineering, I'm assuming that's. I I don't see a exceptional concern about hazardous substances on the site.
Yeah.
Uh, and then provisions of the zoning bylaw, including parking signs, landscaping and environmental standards. We've touched on landscaping and parking. There's no signage that we need to worry about. Environmental standards, we're asking about the trees. And we're commenting on the design. Uh, anything else that we need to, that we need to put in our decision?
No, it's good.
Okay. Okay, uh, so what what's, what motion do we need here? We need a motion to. Recommend unfavorable action and send it along with the decision, or?
I think we have a motion on the floor still unless that gets withdrawn.
I'm willing to, uh, to have someone, uh, put together a more comprehensive motion.
I think we might wanna have two motions, one based on the design and one based on the site plan review.
Okay.
Those are, because we can knock those out. This is like here, I I think that overall. My impression is that we don't have a problem with the site plan review with a couple of minor changes. But we do have a major problem with the design.
Okay, so so we could do a roll call vote on Nick's motion, which I believe was seconded. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's roll call vote on Nick's motion, so Nick.
Um, it it doesn't conform to the, uh, oh, I.
Okay, uh, Brian?
Hi.
Deob?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. And then we need another motion on the site plan. And.
So. Might I recommend, might I move that we? Um, recommend favorable action with conditions?
Yes.
The condi- the conditions would be to, um. Delinately which trees are to be removed and to, um. Now, come up with the plan, provide some reasons why they're going to be removed. No, that's not the right way to do it. We want them to consider ways of saving them.
Mm hmm.
We want them to, um. Minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of their parking.
Mm hmm.
And, uh, I think that was it. I think that's what we all talked about.
Great. Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, John?
So, so wait, before we vote that.
Further discussion, yeah.
I just want to understand what, that would be recommending favorable action with those changes. But at the same time, we just passed a motion saying it doesn't meet the requirements of unified ma- massing of a duplex dwelling.
Yes.
Yep.
Giving them a heads up about the totality of our issues with the plan.
I I and I I appreciate that. I'm. I I'm just curious how we can vote, since ultimately the issue at hand is site plan review for us. Um, I'm just afraid this could be read as a recommending favorable action for site plan review with those two things. And oh, by the way, it doesn't meet these other requirements, but that wasn't, um, that seems to be part of minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scaled buildings in the vicinity. Um, it is, um, by definition, what a duplex, um, looks like. And it doesn't match what a duplex looks like as part of, um, number one. So I have a hard time voting yes. On this, but having just said, but it doesn't, it sort of fails one in my mind.
Okay, so.
That's a good point.
Is there, uh, uh, so, uh, great points, um, is there? Any interest in withdrawing the motion?
Yes, I will withdraw the motion.
Great. Is there any interest in making a motion to? Uh, what's the word for reject the site plan? Uh.
Recommend unfavorable action.
Is there a motion to recommend unfavorable, mm, that's not right.
No.
You just amend your your first motion to include the site plan so that it's all in one.
And and I guess, can we say they, that if if they, um. If they make the roof line. Same, then that will fix the problem?
Hmm, I hate to just have it connected with a straight line and like, think of it as unified massing.
And then we, we want to make sure they didn't change it in some other way.
Right.
Right, they made, they made a positive move forward. Let's just let them come up with a unified.
Okay.
So, um. Going back to, um, Taylor's suggestion that we modify the first motion, I have no idea how you do that under Robert's rules since we've already passed it, but I suppose we could. Vote to withdraw the first motion and then come up or the, then come up with a.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Or vote to amend, sure. Let's vote to amend the first.
Yeah, you can absolutely vote to amend your your decision.
Okay, is there a motion to amend our, uh, our decision?
I recommend Brian come up with this one.
Dun 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 dun.
Uh.
Because you you spoke well to it.
Recommend, I I move that we amend the previous motion. To also.
Include.
Include a recommendation for unfavorable action on site plan review, um, for for the reason stated in the original motion. Which is, uh, unified mat, does not fail to have unified massing of a duplex, um, for a duplex dwelling. Which is also would be. Purpose number one, I believe.
Yeah, I think we we should tie it to to the number one, yep.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, great.
And we're gonna include all the other.
Wrote it down and no one needs to restate it. Any further discussion? No, okay, hearing none, uh, John?
Yeah.
Nick?
I.
Deob?
I.
Brian?
I.
And I'm an I as well, so. The motion passes unanimously. For unfavorable action. Okay.
And and in the recommendation, we will also include our statements on, um. Further understanding what trees would be removed and better understanding the parking plan, um, that's just not part of a motion, but it'll be part of the the free text of that document. If that's acceptable for everyone.
That's great.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
When we see parking, excuse me, parking, we we just kind of mean how they're gonna landscape that strip. Along the street.
Shield shielding it from the public way. Yeah, potentially landscape, right. Okay, uh, we have Michael Wang from Form and Place here for the North Main section that was meant to start half an hour ago. Michael, I'm sorry to have kept you waiting for so long. Thank you for your patience. Um. We had, we had. Been running ahead of schedule, but it blew up. I think you can unmute now.
Yeah, I think I'm good.
Okay, so so you know, lot lots more to do and if, um. We tentatively, or no, we didn't tentatively, we are probably having a meeting next Tuesday with North Main, pretty much at the top of the order, if you're able to join that too. Um. I will let you cover what you want to cover, um, we might want to start with outstanding questions from the work we did on East One and West One, but if you have a higher priority that will facilitate your. Your process, then take it away.
Okay. Uh, Taylor, can I share my screen? Is that okay?
Yep, you're full, full.
Okay, um. Let's see here. Um, okay, well, um. Hi, everyone, um, I I, uh. I did put together a presentation that it was some content I was building for. Your discussion on the twenty ninth a week ago and. And then, uh. Expanded based on your letter, Carrie, which kind of summarized your discussion on that day, and I I didn't know if. Well, first of all, let me ask, how much time do you guys want to spend on this tonight? Because. I probably have easily, you know, thirty to forty-five minutes of stuff I can show you that is responding to your questions from E one and W one, and then I, but that leaves us probably no time to talk about. The other Ws and I, so I don't know what's.
That's okay.
Can we continue that on the next meeting?
Mm hmm, yep.
Okay.
And we're gonna keep rolling the content forward, so I think it started with your presentation. Our our official time of adjournment is nine thirty, but you know, we stretched that, so let's, let's let you, um. Work your way through your material and see how we're hanging in.
Okay, great, um, well, so here's everything that I have, uh, and we can imagine that we're dividing this over a couple of sessions, but. Um, the first thing is sort of reviewing the E one and W one dimensional criteria, where we stand based on your feedback. And I have a number of, um, analyses that I've done that will attempt to explain. For, you know, things like why I don't think we need FAR, uh, if we have open area and building footprint and height defined, and I will show you diagrams that explain why that is. Um, and then I. I, based on some other comments I've heard, I I felt like, um. Maybe taking, uh, doing a massing study of that southern end of, uh, the North Main corridor would be helpful to everyone, just so people could visualize in the context of the street. What three and a half and four and a half stories looked like on the E one side of the street and the W one side of the street, so I have all of that. Um, and then I also have in. Um. You know, the the pages that I have sent along about, uh, design guidelines, graphics that I've been working on. Um, kind of concurrently to this effort, given our timeframe, um. And then I I imagine we would talk about with W two, three and four, but I think that's obviously not gonna happen tonight, but. And then I have schedule stuff which we can review either tonight or or the next time, um. So here's the schedule and just the sort of, uh, shaded area is where represents where we are today. Uh, and what meetings are sort of upcoming, you know, next week, we've got the. Uh, well, the the week after next is the the select board meeting. We were talking just now, Carrie, about sneaking another planning board meeting in the next week, which is fine. Um, I think that works. Uh, and then I, Taylor sent around the invitations for the public hearing, so I think. Some stuff is on track. I'm not sure, Taylor, if there is a stakeholders meeting tomorrow or if that's lighting a little bit. Do you, do you know the answer to that?
There's a chance that I'm just gonna do a recording. Um, I'm, I was thinking about that today, uh, just doing a recording, this I can, I can't get enough people to actually show up. Uh, so let's discuss that in the morning.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, we can revisit that, um. In any case, so. I I had sent around some, I'm gonna minimize you all so I can see my own. Graphics here, um, I had sent around some precedents, uh, studies for various projects that have happened in recent years, and I don't know if you all had a chance to review them, but. I I just wanted to touch on the Water Town Square area plan which just came out, which has a lot of the same content as. The recent, uh, Newton Village Center rezoning and I I, because I thought. The logic behind it and and the idea of, uh, approach to zoning was. Was very similar to what we're doing and have been doing, which is essentially, uh, trying to move away from traditional, you know, conventional zoning frameworks that are based on floor area ratio. And going more towards what will make nice urban form and what are we looking for? In conjunction with density goals and stuff along the corridor. And so if you look down at this starred paragraph here, you know, buildings of different heights and configurations were tested on a few potential redevelopment sites, which is what we've been doing for the last year or two. Uh, and we're testing maximum building heights of appropriateness of different configurations, top floors. Uh, impacts of the side length, et cetera, and essentially reverse engineering to create the dimensional standard. So I think that kind of encapsulates what we're doing. As well, which is is a a common approach these days, and I just thought that would be helpful to. Um, put put this effort in that context, uh, and then I'm also including this image from the. The area, the Water Town Square area plan, because it shows their. You know, somewhat, uh, simplified massing study of a couple of areas around the square and, you know, with different uses highlighted, different colors and and what different stories, you know. Configurations look like with setbacks and, and that's essentially what I have to show you tonight for the North Main Street quarter. Uh, so hopefully that'll be helpful. Um. So we're still on W one and E one here, um. And, you know, you've sent back some comments, uh, from your discussion last time about the use tables and and your thoughts about residential uses. And I I just noted that the mixed youth development had been struck here, but of course that needs to be in there, that's sort of our primary goal for the section, and I think. You're aware of that and that, but rather than dwell on new stuff, I'd love to sort of get into these dimensional criteria. If that's okay, and, um, so. Um, and please feel free to interject i- if you need me to slow down or or explain anything in more detail, but. Um, so just sort of reacting to thoughts that you provided, feedback on site design and then building design. And I'm gonna focus on a. And I'm gonna focus on a few major things here. You had a comment about the open area. Calculation which we had started on ten percent, which was based on the CBD. Uh, criteria with residential being the sixty percent uh like multifamily imagining that. Uh, and you all had had provided feedback that maybe this should be twenty percent at least. Um, and I've done some analysis, which I will go through with you. To show you what actually fifty percent open area looks like. And how that combined with. A controlling building footprint actually solves for. Uh, floor area ratio, and I think gets you essentially where you're looking, what you're looking for in terms of development density. Uh, and residential density. So I'm gonna show you some uh analysis on that. But just also to mention here, there was a comment made about uh concerns about side setbacks. Being revised to go down to zero uh for the residential in addition to mixed use, and my comment there is simply. That these are minimum requirements, so. Uh, if somebody needs to accommodate a driveway, it's not actually the side setback here, which is a minimum that is going to. Be the uh the challenge for that. The challenge is meeting the frontage buildout percentage, uh, if that makes sense. And you know, so when you have smaller sites. Uh, and you're trying to reach a certain percentage of frontage buildout, so you can define the streetscape. Uh, in a way that is desirable. Um, it gets challenging to. To provide access if you're not parking in the building, because only we're parking behind the building. And so we want to put in language that encourages. Uh, shared access, um, and we also perhaps want to, and this is something that Taylor, you and I talked about. Uh, consider the idea of not allowing side by side driveway placement. Uh, in other words, sort of mirrored, so the driveways are together, which there are a number of examples of on the North Main corridor today. Uh, and these things can, you know, obviously there there are so many unique conditions on on all different size sites and and. You know, proximity to intersections and all that, so there's gonna need to be a process whereby through site plan review that you can get relief on that, but that these are sort of aspirational. Uh, approaches to providing access. Uh, so we can tweak the frontage buildout to make it a little bit less uh onerous, and I'll show you what that looks like when we look in the models here. And if you're worried about the twenty uh, the width of the site minus twenty feet. Being an issue for the smaller sites, we can increase that to twenty two or or we can we can tweak these things. These these are kind of minor things I think that we can resolve pretty easily, but. The open area thing is a big thing and it it sort of ties. Into a larger discussion and I. Um, I wanted to just. Spend one second. Talking about the town of Winchester's definitions and and what. Open area percentage is defined as in the town of Winchester by law. It's basically that percentage of the lot area which is not occupied by any structure. So it's greatly a a very simple definition that is essentially saying. The same thing that you find in many other bylaws is essentially lot coverage, so it's the percentage of a lot area which is. Covered by buildings or in the case of open area and not covered by buildings, and it's literally that's all it is. Now, many other. Communities uh are moving to much more sophisticated uh. Series of definitions of open space or open area. And and going with not just lot coverage, which is again is limited to the building footprints, but. Introducing ideas about usable open space, so you're not. You're also potentially providing requirements for. You know, areas that are landscaped uh and usable open space. As opposed to uh including. Parking and vehicular areas as open space, so. And beneficial open space is yet another level beyond that, which i- you know, includes things like. Uh, recreational spaces on the tops of buildings and and you could, the 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 level of uh, you know. Siftation or complication can get quite. Uh, you know, quite high, but and you know, I just something to think about. Right now, we're talking simply about. The area, lot area that's not covered by a structure. There are other levels you could go to and sort of distinguishing between. The vehicular areas and landscape usable areas, so I just throw that out there. And I'm gonna show you one example from our old test fit from two years ago on the parcel four, which is a, you know, south of Clark. Uh, and this was a a a. Uh, a test fit that we did where we actually consolidated four or five parcels. Just to see what a large parcel would yield, and so here's an example of a site that's about a hundred and eight thousand square feet or two and a half acres. It has two built mixed use buildings on it, uh, retail with residential and residential above. The two footprints together at eighteen five approximately each make about thirty seven thousand square feet. I'm I'm sorry, these are a lot of numbers, but essentially what this is resulting in is. Sixty six percent open space, so this diagram you're looking at with the big red line representing a consolidated parcel. And these two big buildings on it represents sixty six percent open space. By the definition in Winchester of open spaces, everything except the building footprint, right? Now, what I did was I also went back to my CAD file and I did an area takeoff of these areas that are green areas. Outdoor amenity spaces, there's one here, there's one here, there's some other areas, there's some outdoor dining areas that we imagined. And those areas actually total thirty thousand square feet, so. You could say that the usable open space or areas that are landscaped, patios, et cetera. Is represents twenty eight percent of the site, so I just wanted you to have that frame of reference that. This very dense. Site, you know, test fit that we did represents sixty six percent open space, but it could also be thought of as twenty eight percent usable open space and. Again, I I don't want to overcomplicate this, but I just I thought that was a useful thing to see.
If I could interrupt really quickly, Michael, um, so we do have a concept of green space. And in some of some of our zoning districts, you have to have a minimum percentage of green space. And our our green space includes grass, trees, shrubs, vegetated or other soft skirt areas, pools, fish ponds, other water features. Does not include areas for parking, so it's 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 um, it doesn't quite have the same uh specificity of those. But I I we could bring in our concept of green space into here.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Great, I like that. Okay, thanks for that, Diab. Okay. Um. Well, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, um, there's so much stuff here, I'm gonna, before I get to the analyses like of the open spaces stuff, I'm just gonna touch on other responses to your questions here, and this is a page about building design. And I I know another big concern you had, and and then we'll have, we'll show you an open space analysis, and then I'll show you this height massing analysis. But just to get to some building design issues here, since we just talked about site design issues. There was a feedback saying that the sixty seven feet and seventy one feet is feels too tall uh for flat roofed and pitched roof structures. And so I I was gonna show you a little, explain how I got to those heights and he- help you understand that. These are are not uncommon uh heights and that are other communities are using as well. Um, and 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 we can look at how step backs help with that and and look at the model and and how that. Uh, you know, appears in the W one and E one, but over here on the right. Um, is a little matrix or two two yellow boxes that. I did, which were essentially my way of calculating out the range of. Of what heights might want to be for. Different um buildings, so. Uh, these these are for uh the the four and a half story buildings, and so you can see for a flat roof building. You know, you, there is gonna need to be a little bit of slop in there for calculating average grade height. Uh, and so at a minimum, you probably want a first floor that's fourteen feet, I would argue for the commercial space. Uh, some may go a little bit lower than that, but I think that's generally what you're looking for, also for consistency of of storefronts heights around along the street. And and residential above, you're getting a typical floor here, and then the top floor might have a little extra, and this is a flat roof configuration, so. Essentially, this top floor is stepped back, but it still has a a full height of floor, but it's it's not as visible. So that yields like a certain height, a certain amount of height. And and then, you know, if you do the maximum version of these, like a first floor commercial could could be appropriately eighteen feet. And you might have a little higher floor to floor height for the residential, et cetera, et cetera. So this is, these are the ranges of that I came up with for, and and this is consistent with what I've seen in other bylaws for. So I'm recommending, you know, you could drop this sixty seven down a little bit to maybe sixty five, you'd be somewhere in between with. Typical floors of residential, it might be eleven, and you maybe your ground floor sixteen. But I wouldn't go much below that, and you know, this is still consistent with the sixty six that you can get to in the CBD, so it's not. Uh, completely out of uh that range. Um, and then the pitched roof, it's just a little bit higher numbers at the top floor because you're dealing with the sloped roof. Um, and and wanting to have usable space up there to a degree, and again, there's a range. Minimum and maximum, so I mean, I could see you could lower these numbers down to sixty five and sixty eight, and it wouldn't be too much of a constraint, because if somebody wants to have a higher pitched roof, they can have a. A shorter ground floor, commercial space, et cetera, so I'll show you what this translates to in the massing model, and I think that hopefully will help. Um, but I just wanted to let you know that this is how I sort of went about that calcu- um, calculation. So as far as FAR. Um. Uh, eliminate FAR, and I think we we absolutely can, and that's very common these days. Um, and I'm gonna show you this analysis that is tied to open area and different sized sites and what happens when you get. You know, sites that are less than an acre in size have a very different thing happens than when you get larger than an acre if somebody's consolidating a parcel, so you'll see how that. I I'll I hope I can convince you that we don't need the FAR if we have the other variables in play correctly. Um, and so again, maximum billing footprint is part of that analysis. And then these are more detailed, I'm not gonna spend too much time on this right now, but I, in doing the massing. I've seen bylaws where an uninterrupted footside length might be more like a hundred, but. Feet instead of eighty feet, and so we can talk about those subtleties um as we keep going through this. Um, the transparency zone, uh, a lot of bylaws do two foot to eight foot zone for calculating the amount of glazing that you want at the ground floor. A lot due to two feet to ten feet. But I think the ten feet can be. Uh, a little bit onerous, um, because sometimes the floor to floor height you're using for the ground floor. Like the this transparency factor is applying to both commercial and also to. A multifamily with no ground floor commercial, you want that still to have a certain degree of transparency. Uh, on the ground floor if it's facing a primary street like North Main, so. I I've found that these aren't that different and that the two to eight foot zone is really. Uh, where the rubber hits the road in terms of the experience. Uh, of 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 an active use on the ground floor, but again, these are detailed and there's a whole nother thing on parking, which I'm just gonna skip through right now, because we haven't really gotten into that yet. So let's let's look at a couple of these. Um, there's two separate analyses here, and if if you can allow me to just sort of continue on and and talk through this. I wanted to show you here, here's, and here are three different sites that are not unlike the size sites you would find. In, well, I think this is more like uh. The E one uh sub district because they're more two hundred foot depth. And and what I've shown you here is is three different sized sites, one that has eighty feet of frontage, one has a hundred feet of frontage, and one that has. Two hundred feet of frontage, okay? And um, this is essentially, if you did not have any FAR or building footprint constraints. And the only thing that was guiding you was the constraint of open area at twenty percent, this is what you could end up with. For building footprints related to a site that doesn't have any side setbacks. So, um, you know, what I want you to notice is. Even as you move to a a site that is still less than an acre here. You're already getting the potential to do building footprints that are thirty two thousand square feet. Uh, which is huge, um, and pancake like, and not what we want to encourage. If you're only relying on the twenty percent open space. So, and let me show you what happens when you then go to a fifty percent open area. And so here you can see you now the building footprint is half of the lot size essentially. And the open area is also half of the uh the lot size. And your FARs now are are not. You know, they're they're in line with what you you have today essentially. Whereas, you know, two story and three story are in the range of what you have today, so and the FAR doesn't change because. It's the lot area, you know, it's it's the building footprint area times um. Uh, the number of floors. So for example. Um, here's a twenty, you know, even on a forty thousand square foot lot. You know, this is a twenty thousand square foot footprint, which is getting towards the larger end, but I think it's still appropriately scaled. Um. Uh, so the 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 catch comes when you move to larger lots, so I'm gonna show you just two larger lots here, a sixty thousand square foot lot and an eighty thousand square foot lot. And so here. With an open area, you you're still allowing uh. You know, like for an eighty thousand square foot lot, you could have forty thousand square feet of lot coverage if you have a fifty percent open area. But this is where building footprint size comes is becomes important when you get into these larger lots. And if you want to limit the size of the building so that they're appropriately scaled. You can say, for example, that you can't have a max, the maximum building footprint can't be more than twenty thousand square feet, or. You can go, you can go lower, so this is what where, for example, a fifty thousand, I'm sorry, fifty percent open area. And a twenty thousand maximum billing footprint now allows you to. Have a comfortably scaled building on any size site and have FARs that are reasonable. Um, and so the catch is that this is a building footprint that is not a residential building footprint, it's a hundred and fifty by one hundred and thirty three feet or so. And so if you translate this to a. A residential footprint, which like for argument's sake would be sixty five feet wide and and a longer. Uh, footprint in the other direction. You can see here, you can you can get with the fifty percent open area and a twenty percent max building footprint. You know, you're getting reasonably sized uh building footprints here that are are doing the right uh kind of. Frontage buildout. Uh, and but you might say, well, gosh, that's a lot, still a lot of of uh density, and maybe we don't want to do that. Uh, farther up away from the CD, farther up North Street, so. Uh, nor- um, North Main, so you could um. As you move north of Swan, for example, if you want to have less density, you can increase the open area just a little bit more. And reduce the building footprints a little bit more, and then you're you're getting. Uh, you know, lower FARs, but I'm sorry, th- this is so much. I I hope you guys are following along here, but essentially what I'm trying to say is. That the open area and building footprints can give you, can can very much control the FAR and the resulting density. And make it appropriate for whatever your targets are, um, which I think we've we've pretty much um have a reasonable agreement on. Um, yes.
Michael, I wanna, I wanna throw um underground par- or first floor. Parking in the building into this mix. Cause that changes your FAR. So let's say that we want people to, you know. We want to have more open area, so we say, okay, if you park in the footprint of your building.
Yep.
Um, like in the CBD, you get to build higher if you put things in the footprint of your building. And that typically, because you don't count the garages. Really increase, it 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 changes your FAR dramatically, so I'm all for getting rid of FAR. But I think if we want to do that, then we run into building height limits.
Building height limits.
Well, I I think we're gonna, the FAR goes out the window, we can't use FAR if we want to do that.
So, but this is the worst case scenario, Diab, so if if somebody wants to park under the building. Um, we're not adjusting the height because we're already at the highest height that we want to be at, that is my understanding, like four point five. Stories is a stretch for people anyway. So someone might want to create a more desirable site. For the residents to look out on by putting the parking under their building. But I don't think that we're in a position to offer any more incentives for additional height at this point, am I misunderstanding?
No, you're not, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand, you know, I know that. In the CBD, we wanted parking to be hidden, so we said, hey, put it under, hide it from us by putting it underneath the building on these tighter lots. And we'll give you some incentive. Um, and I know that FAR, so. Well, I think you're right. Add it, putting a garage underneath isn't gonna do much in term, we can't give them any real incentives, which is.
Yeah. And here, here we're hiding it, Diab, by by. By requiring that frontage buildout, which means you essentially have to park behind the building, so it's not gonna be visible from the street. Um, so it's just a different approach. And and you know, when you get that incentive to go to the four point five stories. The FARs are getting pretty high. But if you know, any reasonable parking ratio, you're not gonna be able to completely park that on site. And so you're going to need to park maybe behind a re. And so you're going to need to park maybe behind a retail liner on on some of the first street or underground. Well, I don't know what, you know, with the economics part there, but um essentially, I don't think this F, th- these are sort of the worst case scenario FARs. And I don't think you would even lo- reasonably get there, so. Yeah. Um, all right. I did one more uh, you know, piece of additional information based on this, which was translating these uh, you know, footprints and to to density. Uh just, and I, but I I I think this is going to kind of even overly complicate things more. There's just so many assumptions that one needs to make when kind of translating to density. And that's about the efficiency of the building, the size of the dwelling units and all that. But I'm just giving you these three examples essentially to say, if you make certain assumptions, and this were based on our test bits, um you know, a three-story multifamily residential building down, you know, and this is gonna, if this was down south of Clark, it would have to be through the MBTA communities thing. So this isn't even gonna be relevant there. But you know, this is based on assumptions about size of dwelling units at a thousand square feet average. Um and you know, so when you get north of Swan potentially and you have more open area and smaller building footprints, you know, you're you're getting kind of limited to about forty dwelling units per acre, which is um like on these larger sites, um which I I think is still, you know, within the realm, this is seventy-six dwelling units. But um anyway, uh this is all just to say that the open area and the building, maximum building footprint, I think, really can control uh, you know, the the FAR uh very comfortably. Let me just jump, I know we're, it's getting late. Uh let me just jump and just give you an introduction to this billing height thing, and then we can circle back next time and and kind of revisit all these points because it's just, it's a, it's a lot of, there's so much, so much interaction between all these variables. Um this was the old test fit that we did that I I I wanted to sort of begin to explore uh to help you understand the visualization story. So what I've got is two different variations on this model, and I've got multiple views. This is the aerial view, and then we're going to go down onto the street, and you'll be able to look at comparison between this. So what I've got, and I'm, I'm going to go back and forth so you can see this. If you look at the parcel four buildings here, which are rendered here as a four and a half story building with a pitched upper roof, okay? So this is what a four and a half story building, buildings with a pitched upper roof look like on the east side of North Main. And then I've got these two parcels here, or actually, they're more niche today, but um in in this test fit, they really represent two parcels. I'm 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 going to show you the difference between a three and a half story mixed-use uh sort of townhouse-y feeling uh development here would would look like just south of Clark. And as compared with just a two and a half story uh residential townhouse. And and then here on this site here, I'm I'm showing you a four and a half story building on the on the west side of uh uh North Main that has the stepped-back top floor, okay? Uh and then there'll be a shorter version of this uh in the alternative. So so this is one, this is alternative one, view one. Here's alternative two, and I'm going to go back and forth. But if you look at these, you can see, for example, these townhouse buildings, they go from a three and a half story mixed-use building to a two and a half story townhouse. On the east side of North Main, we're looking at here the four and a half sloped roof mixed-use building down to a, this is a four and a half step-back uh mixed-use building. So that's not a huge difference there. And then you'll look at this building here, and you can see there's the four and a half version. And here's a three and a half version with a a slope roof. So now I'm going to go into different views, and I'm going to show you, it's again, it's these buildings kind of at the north end of the surrendering, and you can see how the scale changes here as you go back and forth between the two. Again, the townhouses on the west side here versus the mixed-use and the subtle change of a of a pitched roof versus a a step-back roof on the on the east side here. So let's go to another view here, we're getting down into the, this is parcel four on the on the right, and here the townhouses, and then I'll look at, here's the the shorter version, the two and a half. Oops, and the three and a half. So you can get a feeling.
So cool.
Yeah, okay. And then we'll go down actually onto the street, so you can even get another sense of it. And and this, it gets, you know, a little crude because we don't have all the storefronts in and all that detail. But I think it gives you a sense of the scale, sorry. Um so here are the the two and a half lower version sort of townhouses with the stoops in front. And here's a three and a half story uh residential mixed-use building with ground floor retail. And so you can just get a feeling for how these things vary here. Let me go to one more view. This is a view looking south uh from the very north. And here's Clark Street going off to the right, so we're looking south now. And here are, here's that three and a half story uh mixed-use building with the the ground floor retail and residential above. Here's the the northern end of the parcel four with the the four and a half story uh slope roof. And now you'll see, and then then this building beyond here, that's four and a half, and you'll see how it changes when the massing goes down. So it's pretty dramatic because here, these townhouses, they're also, we're putting stoops in front, so they're also stepping back from the street a little bit. So that's helping the the scale too. But I I think uh my point really here was just to show you um how the scale of the massing relates to the section of the street. Uh and the difference, different feeling of having sort of the high version here uh versus kind of a lower uh massing in the, what is the west one over here in this rendering. So and and so essentially, uh just for, you know, a reference here, this is a three and a half mixed-use with ground floor retail. Uh and this is the two and a half townhouse. You're essentially looking at these two prototypes here. There's the sort of uh three and a half with ground floor retail, and this is the two and a half townhouse, right? So that's what these are essentially representing. But anyway, so we'd looked at all these building typologies and what the missing middle looks like. And these are more like the parcel four buildings with the step-back upper floor, and they're more multifamily stuff. So um I I hoping that that gives you a sense. I mean, you can go, this is sort of a, an, uh you can go forever on these renderings and and kind of get this level of detail in here. But it's not, it's it's not probably worth the uh you know, that level of effort. So anyway, um maybe I'll stop there, Harry. We we've got, the next section was just going to show you, which I think you've seen, are these examples of the graphics that I've been working on for illustrating various uh design guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then I had a section where I thought, and this can be next time, where we can sort of begin to fill in what you want in the W two, three, and four, and how that relates to maybe what we're thinking we want to have now on E one and and W one. So um I think maybe I'll stop there if that makes sense.
Right, that was, that was really helpful. Thank you for all of that um thoughts from the board on whether this changes any of the things that we talked about or height. We had, we had we had decided those heights were too high last week, but.
So I'm, I'm looking at the numbers you presented earlier, Michael, where you just had the four floors, and you gave them each a height. Now, you 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 came up with numbers, um recommended numbers, or just really higher than the sum of either of those examples. So um I I looked at that, and I thought, well, maybe there's a little wiggle room there. Um what I have actually, in in the the tail end of your presentation, looking at the difference between the slope group and the stepped roofs, um what to me was the difference in feel at the ground level in that the stepped roofs provided more of a sense of openness than the tapered roofs. Um just because they got it out of your visual frame much more quickly. And I was a little astounded at that. Um the other thing I thought of looking at those, you know, the the two and a half versus three and a half residential versus mixed use on the west side, is that I think it may be interesting to say, as you move up North Main Street, even on that one lot, you could say, you know, the the structures that are right next to Clark Street, two and a half residential, the structures that are further down the street away from the residential, from that Clark Street intersection, could go to three and a half commercial, just in terms of, I'm I'm trying to figure out where we start to slope down the heights. And is that a good place to start? Again, looking, we have to look at what W two does. But um it's it's, where do we start bringing it down? And and I don't know if that's the right place, but certainly it looks like you could do it there. And it wouldn't be, you would still be able to get taller buildings right next door because it would be further from Clark. But um I I I know, I have to admit, the lower look appeals to me more. You know, when you went between the two, I I just liked the lower look better. And I thought the stepped worked better than the sloped, so that those are my comments.
Yeah, I agree with you that, let me just add one thing, that that the perception in the model was that the step-back one really had provides more visual relief. But what's interesting is if you look at this diagram here, and you see the the sloped roof profile and the maximum height of a sloped roof here at sixteen feet. And then you see the half-story dashed in here, just like for comparison's sake. They kind of hit at the same point here, but but there is like a lot of volume that you can still see, and this is going, you know, four feet higher than the, so, I mean, that, you know, it could be that we don't want to allow sixteen on the slope, it could be fourteen, or or maybe, you know, you want to just go with the half-story. I don't know. Anyway, they they they, in the section, they don't look like they would be, have as much visual impact, but I agree with you, they seem to in the model. Yeah.
I mean, the the, there is an appeal to the to the the highly pitched roofs, um particularly in in a town like Winchester, I think. Um and if, you know, if you reduce the height, then you might start getting a flatter uh pitch, whi- which is is the not quite as uh it's um impressive as the deeply pitched roofs.
Yeah, you know, Nick.
No, I I agree, Nick, I think the pitch roofs look much nicer.
Yeah, but.
And there's a thought of like east one does not does not, but I mean, do we want to have the sides be different? I liked that you put the sides, you know, and one has a neighborhood feel and one has a a commercial feel. And that we might, we might think about we might think about, uh, I hate to parse them too tightly, but um are, should the heights be, you know, I keep thinking about DAB's comment that you're going to stand there and feel like you're in a tunnel if it's, everything's built to the same height on both sides, and it's, and we, we make an error and make it too tall. So do we want to have, we're thinking about the slope from downtown to the Woburn Line, should we make? Are the heights correct if they're the same on both sides? I like the adjustment that we make them shorter next to residential areas, and that might be enough to to sort of promise the the feel breaks up pretty quickly, it's not that many parcels. Yeah. It's really subjective.
When you have the sloped roof, there is an opportunity to change the material. You you know, it's hard to kind of write it in the zoning, but if you were designing, when you have the sloped roof, you have a change of material, and you can be selective about that. Um and you can decorate, you you know, with dormers and things. When you step it back, you're just sort of cutting, you you know, it's, it does have a little more commercial feel. It's a very different sort of feel, it's not, doesn't feel well, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't relate well to a lot of older Winchester architecture, but.
True.
I mean, you know, that slope, you know, it can be, you know, if you're of a mind to do it, um you can make very interesting. And uh but.
And someone could choose to do fewer floors and a more dramatic roof.
Yeah, it is, like, sure. But fewer doors, fewer floors, yeah, they're always changing, but they do less.
Yeah.
You know, you could also take the step back, you don't have to do it on the top floor, you could do it on the top two floors.
Yeah, I saw that comment, and um I I was talking to Taylor about that a little bit as well last weekend. Um you know, when you think about the gymnastics of putting residential above commercial already, and and the fact that the advantages of doing a typical residential floor that it repeats above, um bringing a step back, or certainly requiring that a step back go lower, I think, would would be sort of problematic from an efficiency point of view, um but.
A box would be the most efficient, and no step backs, just really, you know. I mean, it's it's, it is short, you know, all of these things are cha- you know, more challenges as opposed to just a blank piece of paper. Um, you know, go do what you want, but. You know, you'd have two floors that are probably similar, who knows what you might, you think about doing with it? You know, you might um decide that those two top floors are two levels, maybe those units are two levels. You know, if you're thinking about developing this. It might be an opportunity to do that. I mean, this is what uh, you know, what you play around with in that business.
Brian.
Yeah, I know, this was super helpful to see those diagrams, the way you, the street view, um which is hard to sort of imagine in your head. Um I I keep on coming back in my mind to to the height, and 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 which is what we're talking about, obviously. Um and it still just seems like a really large, a really tall height for a building. Um we sort of looked, we don't see a lot of buildings that height in Winchester Center. Um doesn't mean there aren't any, but there aren't a lot. Um and I come back to that this is um essentially the same area that is mod three. Um so someone's going to come in here, and they're going to say, I have a choice between building a three-story um byright residential with a one FAR, or I'm going to build under mixed use. Um and so I come back to, how much of an incentive does it need to be for them to say? Um, you know, I'd rather do the mixed use, um that gives me, at least as we currently have it, a bigger FAR and uh four and a half stories and uh quite a bit, you know, twenty feet more of height. Um do we need that much incentive? Does it need to be that tall for um a developer to say, I'd rather um use the mixed use, which is what we would like, than just do byright under three A? Um and I don't know what the sweet spot is for that. Um and and we can spend some time, and I I think it's valuable, how we make a a sixty or seventy-foot tall building look smaller from the street. But I think sort of one of the questions we have to ask is, does it even need to be that tall? Um uh to begin with, for for a developer to say, yeah, this is the route I want to go. And maybe the answer is yes, um it has to, we need that much of an incentive for someone to say, I'm just, I'm just going to do three A byright. Um uh I I don't know the answer to that, and and you probably know it better than I do because it's something you look at in other towns. Um but uh it feels like you could do three byright with three A and four here. If we're talking about four stories, we are immediately of, instead of four and a half, we've got a shorter building, it's still another story, it's still more FAR. It still would be more height. I I don't know, is that enough incentive? I just don't know. Um so that's my ignorance, but sixty to seventy feet tall is just a big building. I mean, no way around it, we can make it look smaller, um or shortening something, I don't know, but it looks big.
I I I gotta sign off for now, but I'm looking forward to continuing at the next meeting.
Good night, Nick, thanks.
Yep.
You know, I don't, Brian said we don't have many buildings that tall. Um I agree, you know, we don't, I think the only buildings I can think of are the Park View and maybe Ten Converse. And I forget, I I don't recall what the height was of uh the Fell's Hardware Project that hasn't been built yet, but I think that would have been about the tall. So maybe the Elmwood was that tall, but. Was that tall, but. This would be, these would be tall buildings for Winchester, we don't have anything. You know, the, and, and Congress Place and of course the Parkview are just so far set back from everything.
We can't forget our new forty B projects, which are quite tall.
Right, but they're not.
They're not, they're not in that part of town.
No, they're, they're sort of on their own, you know. Well, really, they're both kind of, you know. Off in their own, so yeah, and I hadn't thought of those. It would be a change.
Okay, uh, it is, we're coming up to ten o'clock, what decisions are helpful for us to make? So, so, and thoughts on getting rid of the F A R? Yeah, I'm, I feel convinced that if we find a right balance between. Height, open space and building footprint, the F A R seems. Advantage from the developer, unless there's an argument for it, I feel like that's something that.
Get rid of the F A R.
I, I agree, I, I think the, the F A R just confuses things, just. It's redundant and also, because it only applies to certain parts of the structure depending upon the use, it gets confusing, so yeah, let's just punt the F A R. I would.
I tend to, tend to agree.
Okay. One decision.
Can I ask, but we also talked about um. Just eliminating, although we haven't, I don't know if we sort of codified this, just eliminating residential. As part of the mixed use development and saying, if you want to do residential only, come in and use three A. So that it was a clear, that wasn't too short of two options to do residential, there was three A residential or mixed use district if you weren't doing. I, I don't know, we talked about that, I thought we sort of agreed, but I don't know that we sort of said, yes, let's just make that happen.
No, I, I think we did, I think we moved, um. I think we moved residential off the first floor in East One and West One.
I thought we did, yeah.
So I think we had residential uses, but they were meant to be second floor or higher.
The chart still has like residential on, uh, like residential height versus non-residential height and residential F A R versus, uh, mixed use. F A R, so um, I, I'm not saying.
Yeah, we lost, I mean, that's, this is for East One and West One, so these numbers.
Yeah, I feel, I feel better that way.
Your M B T A, you know, mod three goes up, includes W two, right, as well? And then everything north of that is outside of it, so then that's where you go to the both the multifamily and.
Yeah, I, I have to admit that, that removing multifamily except through three A. I sort of feel like I'm jumping off a cliff and then I turn around and I look at the cliff and wonder, I just made the right decision, but it's too late, I'm gonna go. I mean, there's, I don't know what the ramifications are in terms of. I just, I think it's a good idea in terms of the incentive where we want people to build the commercial, the, the multi-use.
It's probably not something we want to continue all the way up the street.
Like, no, that, yeah.
It's just for that. That section, we could change it, I mean, we could, in the spirit of sort of, if it's already a budding residential, it could be all residential. Like, we could really sort of make sure that we protect the neighborhoods.
I mean, I think we can do that with setbacks and things like that and just, you know. I don't think the use in particular will affect, unless of course it's. Yeah, I don't think the use will be. Will affect it any more than it is right now, so.
I, I can agree, I think controlling the form is the way to go. And the more active use you can get along the Main Street corridor, the better, I think. As long as, as long as you're protecting the, you know, the residents behind.
Is there just, logistically for building heights, you had, you had set the potential building heights that, I'm gonna get them wrong. Sixty-seven and seventy-one feet for the, for the mixed use, and then we have our. Our three A height, maximum heights, like just. My lack of knowledge about building plans, is there a midstep or is that sort of like, no, it wouldn't make sense for what normal ceiling heights would be? Is there like a number in the fifties that makes sense for building height or no?
I'm, I'm not quite understanding, Carrie, are you talking about relative to the, how many floors we're trying to do, the four and a half?
Is there, yeah, is there, is the, is the, um, is three A kind of already optimized for? Like, is there, i- i- is it helpful to give them a few more feet than the mixed use or not really?
You mean, in just the multifamily?
No, no, in the, so I, I'm thinking, we were trying to figure out, you know, we're constantly thinking like, why would they choose underlying zoning? And we had kind of the general impression that four and a half stories felt too tall, and it sounds like we're still standing by that from this discussion. So are we then looking at maximum heights that are the same as three A, or is there a midstep in between four and a half and? Three A, I actually don't have the chart in front of me.
Three A is, in that area, three is three stories.
That's what I mean.
Talking about four and a half, so sorry, I just wanted to clarify that.
So if, if, if you went to four stories for mixed use instead of. Four and a half.
How many feet is that?
Well, you, you would, you would, you could drop, you know, twelve, uh, twelve to sixteen feet, but the thing is, is that. In terms of incentivizing someone to use that, if you're then turning around and mandating. That somebody do, let's just say for argument's sake, fifty percent of the ground floor, commercial. Then you're really only giving someone the opportunity to do another half a floor of residential units. Beyond three, and whether those incentives are enough, I don't know.
What about, what about giving an incentive in terms of the open area? I mean, you've shown fifty percent open area for E one and W one. What if we said, um, instead of height, we'll give you an extra ten percent open or ten percent reduction in open area? That's a substantial amount of building.
That's true. We only have twenty percent open area required for three A. In mod one and mod three is sixty percent.
Well, that's already saying that, yeah, I mean, we'd have to, I don't know what the total volume is under three.
Mod one is C B D, so mod three is what we're comparing it to, and mod three is sixty percent open area. So that's, that's, that's a good idea.
So let's say we give you, I mean, they're already getting an extra ten percent if we, if we started at fifty percent. So that's giving a more building mass, so maybe four stories with an extra ten percent is enough, or. Maybe we go to forty-five percent, I think the next step we have to do is think about how much of that open area we're gonna. Say is, is beneficial open area or usable open area or green space. Because I think that cuts into what you can use for driveways and, and surface parking and things like that, and that'll definitely modify things. And, you know, yeah. I think there's, there's also a little bit of flexibility on some of those lots, because they back up on, on, you know, Charger Field. I think. And so there's, there's, uh, there's sort of a guaranteed green space behind. So the impact of a little less open or green space on the property might be mitigated by the fact you can look out your back window. If you're so lucky to have a place in the back and see this big green field, as long as the town doesn't decide to put affordable housing on there. Which I think should be affordable pontoon housing based on the nature of that land, but. But that's another, you know, that's an option, we, I don't know that we can control what happens on the Parkview lot. Obviously, I doubt it's going anywhere, but if they choose to build out, they might actually take away some of that green area. Maybe change their pool into some housing. But that's another option.
So we're just about at ten o'clock, and I think the final. I think the final piece that we need to have our heads around before we settle all of this is what you are cued up to lead into, which is parking. And I think once we have settled minimums and parking access and those sorts of numbers, we'll have a better. Visual of what would happen if we increased open area, like how many cars would that, what, what would that do? Um, and then we could probably lock down East One and West One. Does that seem basically right? And pu- parking, parking is a, is one reason that we felt like we needed the extra meeting, so. But our next two meetings are all pretty much on North Main, so if we can get through parking and design guidelines at the next. I mean, we just have sort of rolling criteria, but.
I, I would like to just ask a question about, about height. Which is, what? I hear that. I hear that there's some pushback on the height, because. Wha- why, why is there pushback on, on the height? I would like to hear that, I don't think that I, 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 I have heard. That because there aren't other buildings that is tall. Are there any, are there other reasons of why? Um, we feel like this is, the height is, is, is too, too high?
It's not that there are, are another. When I say either built, when I made that comment, it was just that, you know, we don't really have anything to compare it to. With a zero setback on Main Street. If you were to tell me it was gonna be sixty-five feet tall and was set back twenty feet, I'd probably think differently about it. But those renderings of Main Streets honestly didn't look appealing to me. It, it was sort of. As if it was all built out. You, you know, every, every piece. It, it's not really realist, you know, none of those are really gonna happen. I mean, you know, one of those all-built-out properties is like a fifteen-year-old apartment building, I don't see that going anywhere, you know? But it still wasn't, you know, it was a little jarring. You know, if it was, if it was pushed back, if it was a sixty-five foot tall building. That was sort of sitting in the middle of the parcel that's Stop and Choppin's in, you know, when it was, it was attractively built. Oh, you know, it could, it would be easier to endorse, I thought.
What's the interaction between setbacks and open area, that's worth thinking about, if we don't have. What are the odds a, a building would get moved backwards? Because the, to, because they have a bunch of open area they have to accommodate.
Well, they're gonna be.
Back minimum is zero, but the.
But there's.
There is a maximum.
I think we're, 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 so there's a tension between trying to keep that street feel. Of having that sort of a, and then the setback, and I, you know, I, I, I agree with John, I think. When I think of um, buildings that I, I think, I know this is, this is an extreme, but if you get on by Ale Life. And you go through the, all of the newly built housing and stuff back there. They're all. It's just overwhelming, and I think what people are worried about is that it's gonna be overwhelming. And that eventually we're gonna be turning into something, I mean, I remember when, you know, Union Square in Somerville. Didn't have those really tall modernist structures, and it was a comfortable place to be, you walk down there now. It's just overwhelming, you, you lose the sense of scale of the surroundings, I, you know, I lived in. Somerville eons ago, but. So I think the concern is that you're turning it into a very urban feeling area, that it's going to just. Not be a smooth transition in a sense from the C B D. To this, what's. It's just gonna be kind of an alien feel to it, and I think that's, that's what I, you know. I'm not afraid of height, but if it's setback, one of the things I really love is if you go down and you look at some of these older apartment buildings. Which are set back and they have this sort of little courtyard in the middle that you enter, and they can be very tall, but there's this graciousness. And there's a feeling of space. And that is attractive, but how you, how you make that work with the need to have this sort of, you know, this, this street face. I, I'm gonna get that term wrong, Michael, I apologize, you said it five million times, I should know by now, but, I mean, that's the tension that I get is, is, is. We want to have an active streetscape, we want to have that first floor commercial, but we still want to have the buildings. I mean, I can imagine if you push back the building, that gives you a little more room for, you know, amenities in front. But again, that violates that sense of streets of, of.
But we could, we could potentially condition, you know, zero percent, we have a maximum setback, I think right now it's ten feet. But we could think about a maximum setback. That is useful open area.
But what, how does that affect your, your, you know, we want people to use this for their first floor commercial? So if we start pushing the building back, how does it affect your?
Maximum, that's what I mean, like. Than ten feet, it can't go whatever many feet, and then if it's a useful open area. It will end up being a bench or dining or bike park, you know, so it will be something that's active. But the building's not at the sidewalk, and the sidewalks, don't forget, Michael has zoned to be fairly wide. So they're not, it's not a narrow sidewalk and then a four-foot building.
So, I saw that, where was the, the additional area of land for that sidewalk? Are we gonna require the? Landowner to contribute three feet of, three feet of land? Which I, you know, it's an interesting idea.
That was, that's the theory, that if, if the existing sidewalk to the property line is less than twelve, you're. Requiring it to be set back to twelve, and that's, that's where the, you know, from the curb. And I think that's, that what, that's what provides a little bit of relief. It's for the height. And I, 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 I can, I can hear the, the, the balance you're trying to strike here, because going all the way back to the beginning of this exercise. Couple of years ago, like the two goals are to get more density and, and intensity in this area. And also get an active streetscape, um, and so those two things, you're, I think you're, you're fighting, you're fighting against each other in some respect. It's just a question of what's the right balance in your mind, so.
You know, I don't, uh, you know, I'm familiar with. The development in Newton along Washington Street. Newtonville by the Star Market.
Trio and Austin Street and.
It's a very different, you, you know, there, along Washington Street. You know, there isn't another side, it's the Pike, you know, it's just depressed, you know?
Very wide street too, yeah.
It's, it's a very broad kind of boulevard kind of thing, and there isn't even another side to it, the other side is, on the other side of the Pike, it's. Hundreds of feet away. And this is in Newton and it's, it's not Watertown, you know, I'm very familiar with Galen Street and Watertown. It doesn't, you know, this, I was looking at it, I, I was in, uh. I was going down Boylston Street today, uh, in the Fenway, which has changed tremendously in the last twenty years.
So much.
It, uh. You, you know, it didn't feel great, it's like Sixth Avenue in New York.
Or a little bit of the.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's just like. It's not great, I don't, I didn't like, you know.
I mean, the, I, 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 it's, it's, it's. It's not great in downtown Winchester.
No, it wouldn't, and you know, I was looking at those drawings and I was thinking of, you know, my trip to Longwood.
Well, you know, and we're not, you know, it's summer, so we have very low attendance at these, but this is, it will be very unpopular if we say we're doing a zero setback. With four and a half feet, we won't pass that zoning, so we have to think about that too.
So, so essentially though, if, if the current plan is to have a wider sidewalk. Then it's actually not zero setback right now, it's three feet, because we're asking them to give us a certain amount of. And I think that what we need to do, and I actually was just thinking, I should take my tape measure with me next time. And I should go and start measuring distances between buildings and curb, so I get an idea of. Exactly what ten feet is, you know, and if we're looking for, I, I, I chose ten feet, am I wrong about that number, Michael? Is that pretty much?
There's areas where nine is very common, but I think Google Earth could be a much easier way for you to.
Well, I have never been able to get that to work for me like you did, I just, you know, once where you got the heights of all the buildings. I don't know how you did that, I've tried, it doesn't.
There's merit to a field trip, there's merit to.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that carefully, I'm not, I, I think if we can get the height in the back of the building. I, and, and do it in such a way, or trade off some of the open area. So that we can, you know, I think that. It will be more acceptable to town meeting. And I think that's the problem that we're gonna have is people will look at that and simply say those buildings are too tall for Winchester and and. Trying to get them past that initial reaction is the key. How do we? Create the. Visuals or provide the assurity? That we are looking at the visual impact and how to address it in such a way. That people in town meeting will feel comfortable with that sort. I mean. We had when when the CBD rezoning was passed. They, the the planning board at the time put up pictures of four story buildings, four and a half story buildings, five story buildings, and they got it through town meeting. And yet, when the first buildings showed up which approached that height, there was. Immediate pushback from from people in town. So there's this, you know. I think people are a lot more attuned to what that height might be based on what happened with Ten Congress. There's a lot of pushback on the height, and I think there's a lot of people who are more interested in. That. Part of 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 the planning process, so I think we have to be. Sensitive. And educational.
I I hesitate to say this out loud without having really worked through it, but I mean um. It's something potentially intriguing about limiting. The number of stories and thus height. If you do the zeros, zero lot line approach and then saying that you have to do a minimum ten foot setback if you go to. Four and a half or something like that. I I just, I haven't thought through all the ramifications. I'm just thinking out loud. But I I also am encouraged about the idea that. The W one and east and E one are are asymmetrical um, for a number of reasons. And so is you trying to avoid that canyon and and. I guess the question is the justification, the logic is the potential adjacent, you know, a. Adjacency to the residential as you move towards Clark um, but. And 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 the width, you know, the 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 depth of those lots are much narrower, like half the size as they are on the east side.
Yeah. I mean, I I find myself saying a zero, a zero foot setback on on W one is fine. I don't, I don't seem to have a problem with that because I know that the buildings will be smaller. Just because the lots are small. And it's consistent pretty much with the existing feel of that. Area, so I don't think it'll be a big surprise to anyone. Um, I think part of the problem may be on the other side of the street. It's, you know, it's sort of like a greenfield and people, you know, there isn't anything there for people to relate to in terms of what the larger building might look like. Anyway, I could keep talking for too long, so I'm gonna stop.
No, it's all helpful. Okay. Go ahead, John.
I don't think I, when I think about. I don't know why, you know, if you if you were building a residential building. The idea of. A twenty five. Twenty five foot, twenty, twenty five foot setback. You know, would feel fine. It would almost be appealing from a marketing standpoint. You would never do it for commercial, you know, that streetscape we're looking at. But if it, you know, if it was back, if it was setback. And somehow it didn't like kill your ability to do the parking using up. All that space. It would be easier to accept the taller building, I think. But it looks really tight. It looks close there. But.
Yeah.
But I know that's not, I know that's not the kind of the streets we're going for. You know, if it was, if it was sixty five feet. And the face of the building lined up with the face of, you know, town pantry. You know, you might feel the comfort of the good, you know, a a an attractive design.
But you wouldn't have an active streetscape defined, so.
Of course, we. We don't have a. We do have vacancies as it is, so.
Right. Okay, so any um. It's ten fifteen. Any uh, anything we should, how how can we? Michael, what would you like to see as sort of a product of this discussion? I feel like we have a lot of ruminations. We're all good at sort of like deliberating, but what would be helpful for us to? Either have as homework for next week or make a comment on before we wrap up or?
Yeah, I mean. Things are kind of a little all over the place.
Yep.
I don't know, I if you, I mean, what your conversation, I. Um, I'm trying to think what would be the most logical thing to, what place to start next week um. Maybe can I think about it and talk to Taylor and then we can circulate?
Yeah, that's great.
A a framework.
I see, I think. Go ahead.
No, I just, I don't know if you want to begin to. You know, think about the other sub districts um, given timing, or if we feel like we just absolutely need to nail this first and maybe looking at the other sub district would. Inform this a little bit? I don't know um.
Yeah. Go ahead, Deib.
I think that if we got to eighty to eighty five percent on E one and W one. I think that would. I don't wanna go, I I have a feeling that we have momentum on this. We come pretty close. That it would help us move on to the other ones, but if we switch over to.
Will be much quicker. I think we're ruminating on all the big points and I think we will have.
We were. Playing on kind of doing more in this section, you know? Taller heights, bigger buildings and. Bigger change, you know, bigger. Change to what's. Typical.
Deib, I think I cut you off. How are you gonna wrap? What else are you gonna?
Nothing of any import.
I I was just gonna add, I think that. I could be comfortable. Going to town meeting um, advocating for a four story building. I think four and a half, which effectively. Looks like from the side and depending on where your view is, looks like a five story building. I understand we can step back and do all sorts of things. Um, but I think that four story building, especially in East One and West One where we're comparing directly. To the MOD, which would be a three story building and and we would have the argument, look, we want to keep. Ground floor residential, we're gonna give some incentives, but one of those incentives is another story. I think that's a um. A compelling story that we can sell and that they will buy. I don't mean buy in a in a a negative way. I mean, I think it's a a sellable argument. Um, I think four and a half might be a bridge too far. Um, so I think I could be, I mean, I'm I know that. It's a lot of rambling, but I think we have to come, this is something where if we settle how tall we want it to be. Then a lot of the other things are gonna fall into play. Um, and maybe we don't all agree, but I feel like four stories, I could settle on that and just say, I'm good with that. I would move on then. So that's my opinion.
And as Deib said, you could. Make up for some of that area by, you know, adjusting the open space, lot coverage issue um.
Yeah, I I would. If I don't know how difficult it would be, but to say, you know, how much extra open area would we open space? Would we need to offset the half story?
Yeah.
If that, you know, that might be something that if it's just a, you know. It's a few percent, I, you know, I obviously depends on the lot, but um, that would be. A number, because if as as Kerry pointed out, when we started talking about parking and how we're going to use that open area, that has to come in and then we'll figure out. Well, how much, how we can budget it. Yeah.
Is there anyone who would like the, who would like a height above four stories to stay on the table? I I and four, I think is the town's max. I don't think. I don't think anything that suggests a fifth story is gonna be easy here. And I don't think it's the feel that we definitely want. For downtown, so I think if we can start to frame our our East One, West One around four stories um, and maybe lead off with. Anything, Michael, that you sort of look over and say, we gotta vote on this. We can, we can try to. Um, you can let us know ahead of time what decisions we have to make for East One, West One, and then we can have a bit less shaped. Process around parking and design guidelines. And then I do see, and then we have, we also have the. Twenty, whatever the date is, the twenty ninth or sixth or thirtieth or. I'm just making up numbers for you. The nineteenth and then we have the twenty sixth, and those are both mostly North Main content, so we will definitely. Um, if we can get to the west, the west districts at the end of next week, great. And if we can't, we've got um. This is an, this will be an additional meeting, so we'll have, maybe it's the nineteenth.
That's a select board one, right?
I don't know what the date today is. I think that'd be helpful. So the thirteenth and then the twentieth. No, there's a, okay, well, let's sort the meetings out later, but we have lots of time to commit to North Main for the rest of August, so let's. Um, let's, let's spend a minute figuring out the agenda for next Tuesday um, between you, me and Taylor. And um, if there's homework that you want to give us, be be ready to vote off the top of the order on XYZ and that will move us along. Give us that homework.
And I would, I think I would concur that I would tend towards not going above four stories.
Okay, so let's make that a hard top maximum.
I would love to see any, uh, what offsets we would need first, just to understand that, but I think that. I think that's, yeah.
Which may also require some flexibility on your thinking on parking, but.
Right.
Hey, I'm with you on this, on a zero minimum. So.
And for, if we're gonna be doing. If we're gonna be doing four stories, if we want to look at deciding on four stories for next week, Michael, I'll work with you on this, but I would like the board to see. The design differences, the roof line design differences between four or between a a. A regular story and a half story. Just so that that they're aware of what. That looks like.
Okay. That makes sense. More information is always good.
Okay. Uh, anything else that we want to make sure we get done tonight or we? Maxed out.
My my last thing, Taylor, which may just be a you and me conversation, but I I I would love to have a. A sense of whether there's something tomorrow night or not, because it's getting late, but.
I'm thinking that because. There are more. There's too much going on. There's too much. In flux right now. If we can use your time from, which was gonna be for tomorrow for next Tuesday instead, I think that would be appreciated.
Okay, that that makes sense to me. And then we can hit that. After that. All right, excellent.
Hey.
Some some progress?
Thank you so much. All that that work was so helpful. Those visuals were excellent and very helpful and all your work is appreciated.
Agreed, very helpful. Thank you for your patience and putting up with boards which change their minds all the time.
Minute to minute. What hill won't we die on? I I will take a motion to adjourn if anyone's up for it.
Second, some of.
I think we got the second before the motion, but I I will accept it in any order. Uh, roll call, vote, John.
Yay.
Deib.
You betcha.
Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
Nick has left us and I am a yes as well. Thanks, everybody. Good night. Thank you, WinCam. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Taylor. Thank all the, all the alls and our millions and millions of viewers. Good night.
Good night.
Right.